Valdo is present. Precinct one reports fifteen present, fourteen absent. Precinct two. Precinct two reports fourteen present, fifteen absent. Precinct three. Precinct three nineteen present, eleven absent. Precinct four. Precinct four eighteen present, eleven absent. Precinct five. Precinct five twenty-two present, seven absent. Precinct six. Precinct six twenty-one present, six absent. Precinct seven. Precinct seven nineteen present, ten absent. Precinct eight. Precinct eight eighteen present, eleven absent. At large. At large sixteen present, ten absent. One hundred sixty-two members being present, we do have a quorum. Will the monitors please bring forward their attendance sheets?
Check them off on the bottom. We'll have them all stand up?
Yes, right. I'd ask all newly elected town meeting members to stand and be sworn in by our clerk.
Good evening, everyone. Anyone who was re-elected or newly elected in this April's election or tonight before town meeting, please stand to be sworn in. I'll have everyone raise their right hands for me. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as town meeting members in accordance with the bylaws of the Town of Milford and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? So help you God.
The clerk will now read the officer's, uh, read the warrant, I'm sorry.
This is the annual town meeting, May fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, Milford, Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County. To either Constable of the Town of Milford and said county greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth aforesaid, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the Town of Milford, qualified by law to vote in town affairs, to meet in the upper hall of the Milford Town Hall, fifty-two Main Street, on the fourteenth day of May, two thousand and eighteen A.D., at seven-thirty P.M., and then and there to act upon the following articles. Article one, to hear and act upon all reports of town officers and committees of the town.
Motion made in second to waive the reading of the articles. Any vote could be heard. If not, the question comes upon the motion to waive the reading of the articles. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. The clerk will now read the officer's return.
Thank you. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County, Milford, Mass., date April twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified the inhabitants of the Town of Milford to meet at the time and place for the purpose within mentioned by posting attested copies of this warrant in ten or more places in Milford. Thomas O'Laughlin, Police Chief. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'd request that the members stand and join with me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any resolutions to be presented to the meeting? Chairman Walsh.
Whereof the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of Joseph C. Dantonio. Whereof Joseph C. Dantonio was for many years an elected member of precinct two of the town meeting. Whereas Joseph C. Dantonio was a longtime member of the Democratic Town Committee, served as chairman of the Finance Committee, a library trustee, chairman of the Library Building Committee, and a trustee of the Milford Geriatric Authority. Whereas Joseph C. Dantonio served this community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn tribute to his memory, and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to his family. Respectfully submitted, the Milford Board of Selectmen, Michael K. Walsh, Chairman, William D. Buckley, and William, William E. Kincaid.
I'm going to ask that all the resolutions be read before we stand in a moment of silence for the deceased members. Mr. Walsh.
Whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of Dr. David M. Resiti. Whereas Dr. David M. Resiti was for many years an elected member of precinct one of the town meeting. Whereas Dr. M. David M. Resiti served this community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, would be resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn silent tribute to his memory, and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to his family. Respectfully submitted, the Milford Board of Selectmen, Michael K. Walsh, Chairman, William D. Buckley, William E. Kincaid, Jr. Whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of Nazarino L. Bachi. Whereas Nazarino L. Bachi was for many years an elected member of precinct four of the town meeting. Whereas Nazarino L. Bachi served as a member of the Park Commission. Whereas Nazarino L. Bachi served this community faithfully, unselfishly, as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute to his memory, and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to his family. Respectfully submitted, Milford Board of Selectmen, Michael K. Walsh, Chairman, William D. Buckley, and William E. Kincaid, Jr.
Whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret the passing of Donald P. Carroll. Whereas Donald P. Carroll was for many years an elected member of precinct eight of the town meeting. Whereas Donald P. Carroll was a member of the Community Use Committee and Personnel Board. Whereas Donald P. Carroll served this community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute to his memory, and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to his family. Respectfully submitted, Milford Board of Selectmen, Michael K. Walsh, Chairman, William D. Buckley, and William E. Kincaid, Jr. Whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of C. Joseph Knox. Whereas C. Joseph Knox was for many years an elected member of precinct five of the town meeting. Whereas C. Joseph Knox served this community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute to his memory, and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to his family. Respectfully submitted, Milford Board of Selectmen, Michael K. Walsh, Chairman, William D. Buckley, and William E. Kincaid, Jr. Whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret the passing of Thomas J. Zogby. Whereas Thomas J. Zogby was for many years an elected member of precinct four of the town meeting. Whereas Thomas J. Zogby served this community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute to his memory, and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to his family. Respectfully submitted, Milford Board of Selectmen, Michael K. Walsh, Chairman, William D. Buckley, and William E. Kincaid, Jr.
Whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of Donald V. Fairbanks. Whereas Donald V. Fairbanks was for many years an elected member of precinct six of town meeting. Whereas Donald V. Fairbanks served this community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute to his memory, and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to his family. Respectfully submitted, the Milford Board of Selectmen, Michael K. Walsh, Chairman, William D. Buckley, William E. Kincaid, Jr. Whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of William J. Baumeli. Whereas William J. Baumeli was for many years an elected member of precinct three of the town meeting. Whereas William J. Baumeli served the community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute to his memory, and that a copy of the resolution be forwarded to his family. Respectfully submitted, Milford Board of Selectmen, Michael K. Walsh, Chairman, William D. Buckley, William E. Kincaid, Jr. Whereas the citizens of Milford have learned with great sorrow and deep regret of the passing of Michael J. DeCesar. Whereas Michael J. DeCesar was for many years an elected member of precinct one of the town meeting. Whereas Michael J. DeCesar served the community faithfully and unselfishly as a loyal and sincere citizen. Therefore, be it resolved that as a mark of respect, the business of this meeting be suspended while members stand in solemn and silent tribute to his memory, and that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to his family. Respectfully submitted, the Milford Board of Selectmen, Michael K. Walsh, Chairman, William D. Buckley, William E. Kincaid, Jr.
If I may be allowed, never in my over forty-two years as a moderator have we had so many resolutions presented at this town meeting, the annual town meeting. I think there was another meeting and another warrant for meeting above. And I envision Mike DeCesar giving a final report as co-chairman of the Milford High School Building Committee and reporting to the town that will serve the town for many years. That was back in nineteen seventy-three. I also see Bill Baumeli presenting a report of the, of the planning board as to a zoning change. I see Reno Bachi making sure as park commissioner that no dogs are allowed on, on parks and bragging about the transformation of a dump into Plains Park where our children and our grandchildren are enjoying many moments of recreation and pleasure. I see Don Carroll, who is my high school baseball coach, presenting a report of the, of the Personnel Board. I also see Dr. David Resiti stepping forward from precinct one and speaking on many issues before our town meeting. And to people like Tom Zogby and Don Fairbanks and Joe Knox, they're representing above all those members who faithfully attend our meetings, don't get up to speak, listen carefully to the arguments being presented, and vote in the best interest of the Town of Milford. And finally, to Joe Dantonio, as I look over, I see him sitting there as he's probably sitting above, and whatever they're discussing, whether it's changes to town meetings above or, uh, he's there to move the previous question and move to adjourn to another night or dissolve the warrant. So, as a token of our respect and admiration for these people, I'd ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. Are there any reports to be presented to the meeting?
Chairman of the Personnel Board. Good evening. Report from the Personnel Board for May fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen town meeting. Town meeting members, the Milford Personnel Board, like all other personnel boards in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, was created in order to assure that the hiring of new persons is in the best interest of the town. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-one, Section one oh eight A, one oh eight C, were enacted to eliminate politics as much as possible from appointing process and to protect the town meeting members' authority as to the salary and wages of those individuals not in the union, under contract, or subject to collective bargaining agreements with the town. The Milford Personnel Bylaws specifically eliminate town employees and other officials from serving on the Personnel Board in order to maintain a level of independence from potential political influence. The structure of the Personnel Board is implemented across the Commonwealth and provides a level of protection for the persons being hired based on an objective standard. The Milford Personnel Board's duties are outlined in Section three point oh one, three point one-eight, entitled Administration and Records. These are the foundation of the operation of the Board. In particular, Section three point oh seven defines the major work conducted as follows. Three point oh seven, except as herein after provided or as otherwise authorized by law, no person shall be appointed or employed in any position under any title other than that appearing the classification and compensation plan or under any wage or salary other than that is established in the Wage and Salary Schedule. The Personnel Board functions pursuant to well-established criteria. The Board collects information to objectively determine the rating of each position under its jurisdiction. The newly created position of Human Resource, or H.R. Director, was presented by the Board of Selectmen to the Personnel Board, which applied the criteria to rate the job and assign a position level and step schedule under the Wage and Salary Administration Plan, approved annually by town meeting under Article Two. The H.R. Director cannot be a voting member of the Personnel Board without violating the current Personnel Bylaws. Article seventeen in this year's warrant is an attempt to change the composition of the Board, and it nullifies the principles on which the Personnel Board was established, namely independence. The focus of the H.R. Director should be on the daily assistance to and management of the needs of town employees. The position should function in a sim, in a similar manner as in the civilian, non-government workplace. The Director should act as a liaison to the Personnel Board and not as a sitting member on the Board. The Personnel Board unanimously, unanimously opposes the passage of Article seventeen, and we ask for your support in defeating Article seventeen. This past year has been fraught with apparent confusion by the Board of Selectmen with regard to establish rules and regulations under the Personnel Bylaws with respect to hiring personnel. We believe that this confusion has been rectified, and the Personnel Board has done our best to both accommodate the requests of the Board of Selectmen and all other departments and individuals who appear before us. We are expected to be objective and non-political in the execution of our duties. The Personnel Board's only agenda is to do everything that we can to do, to assure that qualified persons are considered for positions at competitive wages with other municipalities. Thank you for your consideration.
Are there any other reports to be presented?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, since the report of the Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee was mailed to each of you in the warrant, and time is of the essence, I move to dispense with the reading of the report.
Motion made to dispense with the reading of the report since every town meeting member has the report of the Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion's carried. Any other reports? Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Moderator. Chris Moore, Chairman of the Finance Committee. Every time I come up to talk to you, I always say I'm going to be brief, and you all know it's not true. Um, we're...
Can everyone turn their releasing signs so they're parallel onto the side walls? It's hard to see the screen.
Turn your signs. So ladies and gentlemen, uh, this is a slide we have up every year. It's basically the philosophy of the Finance Committee. Anytime we go into any budget season, um, we have an intention always to reduce long-term debt without increasing operational budget by adding available funds to stabilization. You know, every town meeting, we always try to put money into stabilization. Currently, our stabilization funds, our main stabilization fund, is about seventeen and a half million dollars. And we also have a long-term capital stabilization fund that we use for any capital expenditures, and that's about four, a little over four million dollars. So not counting the sewer enterprise fund, we have about twenty-one million, twenty-two million dollars in the bank for savings, which obviously is a very impressive number, and it leaves us in a good position for any unforeseen expenses that can come up or any large projects that we have in the future. As I just spoke of, of our capital items, that money would become from our stabilization fund for long-term capital, like that we've been putting money toward. Also, we have a very strong commitment to reduce the tax rate. It is our philosophy that our taxpayers should never pay more than they have to. That doesn't mean that if services come up that are needed by this town, and we provide a lot of them, that we will obviously continue to do that, but there is no reason for us to tax any more than our taxpayers need to. And the last one is to maintain operational budget control. We do that through extensive vetting of every department's budget. The department heads do an excellent job of getting their budgets together, talking to our subcommittee on the Finance Committee, and then to the Finance Committee as a whole, and then obviously to present, to present to you at town meeting. Now, Article four is the big enchilada. This is all the operational budgets in our town, and if you see the numbers there are pretty significant, especially the bottom number, where you see right now, our proposed budget for today on Article four is a little over, not a little over, a half million dollars over a hundred and three million. So, hundred and three million, five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So obviously, a significant amount of money that we're looking to spend at this town meeting. All these budgets have been extensively vetted. Some of the highlights that I'd like to point out to you because they are some larger numbers, you'll see on general government, you'll see that there's a seven point five percent increase in that department. Some of the things that we're looking to do in general government is we're looking to add the position of an H.R. Director. We currently run a hundred million dollar corporation and have no H.R. Department. People are stunned by this, just for our training, basic information that we need to provide to our employees. There is not a go-to place for this at this time. Our town is too big now. We can't continue to, continue, we can't, excuse me, we cannot continue to act without some sort of centralized H.R. Department. The Selectmen have proposed the, the institution of this department, and that's about a ninety thousand dollar expense in that department. Also, you'll see in general government, there is some extra money for elections. We're having a special election. Also, we have continued early voting that you guys have seen. If some people are not available on Election Day, you can come to Town Hall and do early voting. Obviously, there are costs that associated with having an extra election next year as well as early voting, and that's about fifty thousand dollars. Also, we're looking for a little bit of part-time help in the tax collector's office, and we're also going to have some, uh, we have an OPEB audit this year in the, in the Treasurers Department. All those are increased expenses for next year that are not usual. Public safety, you're going to see a significant increase here at nine point five percent. We're going to go over this in a little bit, and obviously Chief O'Laughlin's going to come up and explain to you about a very aggressive plan that the Selectmen have asked to put together regarding a police task force, and we'll get into that later about what that entails. Also, there is a additional fire, firefighter in this budget as well. When talking about amount of calls, the fire chief came in to us, and he said, fifteen years ago, I had forty firefighters. This year, I have forty firefighters, and yet calls have gone up sixty percent over that, over a fifteen-year period with no increase in staff. I don't know how he's been doing it all this year, all this time, but right now, the Fire Department needs our help, and they need another employee. So that is another reason why you're going to see public safety has had a significant increase. Another increase in the public safety that is astronomical is our hydrant services. Our hydrant services is the cost that the town incurs in order to be able to have fire hydrants around town. All of you know our water rates have gone up significantly? That means our hydrant service rates have gone up the same. It's a twenty-three percent increase in what it costs our town to run the hydrants. It's about two hundred thousand dollars more for us to have our fire hydrants next year than this year. Significant increase. Education, we'll talk about later. You'll see that there's a four point six percent increase in education. Not much in public works. Human services, the youth center is looking to start a general expenses budget. They've never had a general expenses budget down there. You see the building down the street. Obviously, it's significantly bigger than the previous facility. They are now starting to incur more expenses, and they're looking to set up a general expenses fund. You will see that the debt service number has gone down. There's not often that you see these numbers with a minus next to them. Obviously, that's a good thing. Through aggressive paydowns of debt that we've asked of you in the past, to use free cash to pay down some of these debts on higher yielding, or higher paying costing notes, excuse me, and other actions, we've been able to lower down our debt service as debt comes off the books. The other thing you'll see here is employee benefits. Obviously, anyone who works for the town, you get things like insurance, both health, dental, all that kind of stuff. Obviously, all of us know health insurance is a significant expense, and it goes up at a very significant expense. See, there's some of the things that I talked about there. The school department, at, you see there at the four point five percent, actually, it's four point six percent, I apologize. I think there's like a half percentage in there. And you'll see that the amount of the, amount of the increase at four point five percent, two point two-three of it is an increase... two-point-two-three of it is an increase in the sped and ELL budget, and two-point-two-two percent is on the general education budget. I know we've all gotten the town crier, and obviously, this is a small town, and talk goes around town about the school budget. Some confusion about why things weren't done, why is the amount up? I know that this is a significant expense for everyone, and there are a lot of questions. I will tell you that recently, a group of concerned citizens have reached out to the school committee, asking for a lot of questions to be answered. In response to that, the school committee has come back to this group, and they have basically struck a deal. What this deal would entail is to answer some of the questions that some of our residents have about the large increase, that the school budget, the school committee and its administration are going to now focus stronger on getting a long-term educational plan done. They're going to have open forums for the public, you Town Meeting Members, all the other public members of town, to come in and be able to address any questions, concerns that you have as residents. Obviously, this is the biggest expense that our town has is education. Obviously, you need to get the answers that you want, and the school committee is working hard with some very concerned citizens to try to get those answers for you. And I think that they've struck a very good deal in order to be able to get the information to you, the taxpayers, as well as keeping the school committee accountable to you as well, to make sure that they follow through with their plans. Some objectives we have as a Finance Committee, you'll notice that this slide is very similar too. We're hoping to have three-point-two million dollars in taxpayer relief. That's what I talked about when I say that we shouldn't always tax to the amount that we legally can. There's no reason for it if we can still provide good services to the people. You don't need to be overtaxed. Also, we would like to make a five-hundred-thousand-dollar stabilization contribution. Like we always do, we always like to save. One day, there's going to be a rainy day, and to have these funds available, to be able to offset things like the tax rate, or make large purchases like a school, or any large building purchase that we might do, it's always great to have it. We consistently allocate one-point-five million dollars in capital purchases, things like highway department trucks, which are significant purchase, two, three-hundred thousand dollars, fire trucks, five-hundred thousand, million dollars. This one-point-five million dollars will, every year, go toward capital items. And also, we like to pay off available debt when financially feasible. Right now, there isn't any debt that's on the books that we're, that we're addressing. We have for the past couple of Town Meetings. At this time, there is nothing there that makes financial sense. I know this is small text. Everything's going to be enlarged in the next couple of slides. This is our revenue and expenditures. If you see anything later on, the big thing is the zero for surplus. Things are getting very tight in this town. There is a lot of new hires in this town, a lot of new departments being created in this town. As good as we're doing financially, this was a tough year. Some people had to go without this year because there are some new additions. Even though, like I said, all these numbers are healthy, it gets to a point where we can't keep growing government anymore and still be able to provide good taxpayer relief to the people. You're going to notice some increases on that sheet, as I talked about retirement. Retirement increase of seven-point-eight percent in that expenditure, a very significant number. What that is in, it's hard to explain, but the best analogy that I can use is if you have a thirty-year mortgage, and all of a sudden, the bank comes to you and say, you need to now pay that off in twenty-five years instead of thirty, obviously, your monthly payment would go up. We have a very significant sixty-plus-million-dollar liability to retirement. We need to get that to a fiscal year thirty-five deadline. Basically, they've told us that you have to be on a payment schedule that would say that you're going to pay off this liability by 2035. In order to do that, we basically need to increase our monthly payment like we do on our mortgage. That's why you're seeing a significant increase there, because we're having to throw more money at it. State revenue has gone up five-point-five-two percent. The financing from the state has not been finalized. It's gone through three-quarters of the process now. It has not completed the entire way, so we do not have a rock-solid number. Three out of the four numbers, though, are very close. We feel like we have a great grasp on what that number will be, and it's looking about five-point-five-two percent higher than last year, which is obviously very good news to know that we're getting more money from Boston. Some of the assessments that you're going to see, and obviously, just referring to what I talked about later with, earlier with the schools, excuse me, you're seeing that we have one-point-two million dollars it's costing us to send our students out of town. Also, for charter schools, it's costing us three-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand. That's our portion that the state tells us we have to pay. And for the first time, the bus that we all see from the MWRTA, for the first time, that bus is hitting our books. Right now, because of a CHINA grant, because of state reimbursement on things, it's a fifty-thousand-dollar hit on our books this year. As I talked about, this is the revenue we're talking about. Our local receipts, which is basically our property taxes, excise taxes that we pay to the town of Milford, is about seven-and-a-half million dollars. The rest of the money's coming from the state. As I mentioned, the cherry sheet, which is basically state funding, you're looking at about twenty-eight-six, and basically, to get us to about a revenue of, not about, one-hundred-and-ten million, seven-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars is what we're taking in. Our expenditures, these are what I talked about, the numbers earlier where I had the percentages. These are all the individual departments and what they're costing us dollar-wise. You'll see it's about one-hundred-and-three thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-two, eight-twenty-six, if everything goes the way we think it's going, or the way we hope it goes tonight. Some of the goals that we would like to tackle in the special Town Meeting is we're looking, as I mentioned, the five-hundred-thousand-dollar contribution to stabilization. We're also looking to have a levy adjustment of three-point-two million, and as I mentioned, some of the assessments. That number at the bottom is the one I was talking about, that big zero. I haven't seen a zero there in a while. That's how tight things are getting. You are going to see some financial articles on the Town Meeting tonight. Article eleven, Water Company Acquisition. It seems like every Town Meeting, we're talking about this. Last Town Meeting, when I came and I asked you for money for Water Company Acquisition, I was fully confident that it was going to be the last time that I came to you. Unfortunately, and with no fault of the Town, negotiations have basically fallen apart. The Water Company has decided that they have no interest in talking to us, no interest in negotiating, and has forced our hand to go to the DPU in order to complete the sale of the Milford Water Company. The purchase of the Milford Water Company, now that it's with the DPU, the DPU will give us a judgment in about eight months, and it will say, "Town of Milford, you can buy the Milford Water Company for X dollars." We then have the choice, that because of new legislation, we have the choice. Yes, we want to buy it; no, we don't. The Water Company does not have a choice. So if we complete this, and they tell us it's going to be two-hundred million dollars, we wave and say, "Thank you very much. We really appreciate your time, but we're not going to do it." If they come back with a number that we were looking at, at the sixty-one million dollars that we've budgeted, or something lower, obviously, we've done well. So that's kind of where we stand with that. This three-hundred thousand dollars is basically legal expenses to get through the process of this eight-month in order to be able to clean this deal up and get it done. Article fourteen, usually, we do capital in the fall. The freezer at the high school is dying. Obviously, this is time-sensitive. This isn't something we can wait till the fall for, so they're looking for eighty-five thousand dollars in order to replace this. Also, another thing that's time-sensitive, voting machines. Our voting machines need to be replaced in order to be able to accurately tally the votes. That's forty-eight thousand dollars. Article nineteen is a hundred thousand dollars for sick leave buyback. We currently have a fund in which we pay claims on sick leave buyback. That fund is starting to get a little too low. We need to replenish that. So this hundred thousand dollars would help replenish that fund so that when sick leave buyback requests come in, they can be paid out properly. Article twenty-two, the Finance Director will buy me a drink for doing this, because I'm going to try to explain something a little complicated. The Milford Geriatric Department, sorry, Milford Geriatric, Countryside, thank you, lost myself. They did a project up at their facility in which they borrowed money. They borrowed money with a tax-exempt bond, which made it extremely narrow on what those funds can be used for. The town of Milford has bonding that it needs to do for the Woodland School in order to be able to complete that process. Countryside borrowed more money than they needed. They have three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars that are just sitting there that they cannot use. They can't be used for anything except a bonding project of the same like. Milford has a bonding project of the same like. What we're trying to do here is we're trying to use the three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand that the Geriatric has just sitting there that they can't use and use it for our Woodland Project. We're going to have to go out and bond it anyway. We can use their money, which is just sitting there, help them out. We're going to have to bond it anyway, so we're going to take their three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars and pay off the rest of the Woodland Project. It works out for both sides. Obviously, the Milford Geriatric, or Countryside, sorry, is going to need to be paid back these funds. We're still working out on what the procedure would be in order for us to pay the Milford Geriatric, their three-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars, whether it's, they don't pay us payments on bonds or whatever, but we're working that out. But that, in a nutshell, is what Article twenty-two is. It's basically just a shell game of taking the borrowing of one place that can't be used for anything else, it's just going to sit there, and letting the town of Milford use that money for something we need anyway. So to be honest with you, it's actually the stars aligned, and it is very complicated, but it's very simplistic at the same time. They have the money, we need the money, let's use it. The Health Insurance Fund in Article twenty-three. Years ago, the Selectmen set up a fund in which employees who paid deductibles at the doctors, once they reached a certain threshold, there was a fund they could go to once they got maxed out, to try to apply for some relief. This hundred thousand dollars would help to bring the fund up to a higher level, because right now, it's going to dissolve, and it won't be available for employees. Last, Article twenty-seven. You all know we didn't have a fun winter. We need to clear up snow and ice. Unfortunately, it's four-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars, a significant amount of money, but we have to pay it off. So that's Article twenty-seven. The funding sources on this, it's very simple. We're paying it all from free cash. We're not doing any raise inappropriate. That's why it's, to be honest with you, you may not be able to read it, but it's not important. Everything we're paying for is with free cash. We're starting out this meeting with two-point-one million dollars in free cash. We're going to, if everything passes today, we're going to spend about one-point-two million dollars of that free cash on Articles. So entering our special Town Meeting in October, we are going to have approximately nine-hundred-and-three thousand, eight-hundred, nine-hundred-and-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars of free cash, not including what we gain over the year going into Town Meeting. We're going to have an excess levy capacity. We start at four-point-seven million, with five-hundred thousand dollars going to stabilization. You'll notice that says one-point-three-two million for capital. I said we spend one-point-five. We're subtracting the freezer off that. We're still only going to spend the one-point-five total. So this freezer that comes up at this Town Meeting counts toward the one-point-five. So we're going to have an estimated levy capacity of two-point-nine million dollars. As I mentioned to you, it is our goal, and is my intent, to have an excess levy capacity of at least three-point-two million dollars. How are we going to do that? What we're going to do, and what we have done in the past, is we're going to use some of our free cash that we have at the next Town Meeting to try to get that up to the three-point-two, to make sure the taxpayers get the full relief that I believe that they deserve. This is a slide I end with all the time, but I don't know, I may take it down next year. We have, stay the course here. Things are getting tight, but we have to continue to do what we're doing now. We are still the envy of everybody around. I've had people from other towns, they can't believe the financial position that we're in. It's because of the hard work of the department heads. I know, I love the work that my committee puts in, and for you, the Town Meeting Members, that keep us going in the right direction. Thank you very much.
Just as a refresher for those new Town Meeting Members, if you're a new Town Meeting Member and you are a precinct member, you have the ability to speak on any article and present motions and amendments motions. Any registered voter can address the meeting. You'd be sitting in the rear of the hall. In order to get my attention, please stand, yell out, "Mr. Moderator," and hopefully, I'll recognize you. If you're not a registered voter in the town of Milford, you require the unanimous consent of the body in order to address the meeting. Obviously, you talk on the article, you don't talk about the person that's presenting the article, but argue for or against the motion. Okay. What is the pleasure of the meeting? Dr. Allen.
Ladies and gentlemen, Town Moderator, I move that we limit speaker time to five minutes as we've done in the past. A previous speaker can request to speak after all other speakers have had a chance to speak. Hope you vote for this. Thank you.
Motion has been made to limit speaker's time to five minutes. A previous speaker can request to speak after all other speakers have had a chance to speak. Requires a two-thirds vote. I'll take a unanimous vote. If that is not unanimous, then the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor of the mo-
There was no discussion. You have a right to address that issue.
No, it's not debatable. It's not debatable. Motion to limit debate is not, not debatable.
I agree.
Well, I've looked it up, and I'm sure that I'm right on that, okay? Mr. Nero, I've double-checked on that, okay? It's not debatable. Any, all those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
All those in favor will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Monitors, all set. All those opposed, rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one.
Fifteen in favor, one opposed.
Precinct one, fifteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct two.
Mr. Moderator, we have an increase in attendees to seventeen present, twelve absent. For this vote, we have fourteen positive and three negative.
Fourteen in favor, three opposed in precinct two. Precinct three.
Nineteen in favor, none opposed.
Precinct three, nineteen in favor, three opposed. Precinct four.
Twenty-one in favor, none opposed.
Precinct four, twenty-one in favor, none opposed. Precinct five.
Twenty in favor, five opposed.
Precinct five, twenty in favor, five opposed. Precinct six.
Twenty-one in favor, zero opposed.
Precinct six, twenty-one in favor, zero opposed. Precinct seven.
Nineteen in favor, none opposed.
Nineteen in favor, none opposed. Precinct eight.
Nineteen in favor, none opposed.
Precinct eight, nineteen in favor, none opposed. At large.
Mr. Moderator, we have an increase in attendees. Now with eighteen present, eight absent, and the vote was eighteen in favor, none opposed.
At large, eighteen in favor, none opposed. One-hundred-and-fifty-six, having voted in the affirmative, twelve in the negative, the necessary two-thirds has been acquired. Therefore, we will limit each speaker to five minutes. Okay. What is the pleasure of the meeting? Article two. Mr. Carroll.
Dennis Carroll, Chairman of the Personnel Board. Article two. I move that the Town vote to amend the Wage and Salary Schedule of the Wage and Salary Administration Plan by establishing new position levels and salary levels as recommended by the Personnel Board for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and eighteen as follows.
Mr. Moderator, I move to waive the reading of the article if it is exactly as appears in the- as appears in the information that was provided to the town meeting members. Mr. Carroll.
Mr. Moderator, it is exactly the same except for the dates under Section B and Section Eight, where the year is incorrectly stated.
Section B?
Section B, at the bottom, it says, "Any employee's base rate of pay effective as of June 30th." I believe the article they have has 2017, should be 2018. And the rest of that reads fiscal year 2018, so you say 2019. And the same is true with Section H, paragraph at the bottom.
I'm sorry, Section Eight?
H.
H.
H is in Harry.
Yep. And what's the change there?
Exactly the same there.
All right, so that, all right, so that the date would be June 30th of 2018, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any, any vote that care to be heard on the motion to dispense with those corrections? All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Mr. Carroll.
Yes, this is a normal increase for Article two. I'd please ask you for your vote on this.
Any other vote that care to be heard? Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, town meeting, moderator, I move to strike HR Director from Level Two of the Wage and Salary Schedule. Reason being—
Motion's been made in second to strike HR Director from Level Two of the Wage and Salary Administration.
Reason I bring this up is that it seems to me that we have got a lot of redundancy Finance Committee said we're a $100 million corporation. We aren't really. The majority of our money goes for wages. The job description for the HR Director spells out that it has nothing to do with anything with the schools. We also have union contracts with police, fire, library, employees. There's just a handful of people, we have some contract workers, that this would affect. My feeling is that if we hire for, as they say, about $90,000 for an HR Director, we're gonna have the Maytag repairman. We have excellent people that work with the benefits, with Kelly Capice. We have Retirement Board, Entirement Administrators, which we have excellent people do that. So I fail to see where an HR Director is going to be beneficial for the town of Milford other than just providing another employee that we're going to have to pay. And I'm sure that down the road, this employee will come in to us and say, "Gee, I need a secretary, and I need this, and I need that," and our costs are gonna go up. So I'd appreciate your supporting not funding the HR Director. Thank you.
Any other vote that care to be heard?
You know, we're a substantially large corporation with a substantially large number of employees. Those employees are entitled to fairness and equity. They're entitled to training. They're entitled to training that most of us receive in the private sector, as required by federal laws, required by state law. Right now, there is nobody tracking this. This, this currently, as described by the previous speaker, is not going to just support the Article Two positions, but are available to any of the department heads for any of the guidance they need in order to help department heads who may struggle sometimes with employee relation issues, help department heads who might otherwise make wrong decisions in their documentation, to assist them and get employees on the right track. We are much too large, a town and much too large a corporation, not to have somebody directing our HR training efforts and direction and guidance to both department heads and, by the way, the individual employees. So I would strongly disagree with the previous speaker, and I would urge your support for this article, or urge, I'm sorry, urge you to defeat this amendment. Thank you.
Any other vote that care to be heard? Any other vote that care to be heard?
I can talk on a personal note. It's no secret I work at Imperial Cars. I've been there 28 years. For years, we didn't have a Human Resources Department, and we finally put one together. In the first meeting that we had as managers, an attorney stood in front of the room and said, "I'd have a field day with every single one of you." And we started this intense training. And what you realize is that although you think on a daily basis as a department head, you've got control of your department, when it comes to human resources, you don't. It's not the simple things of, "How much sick time do I have left? How many personal days do I have left?" That's minor. That's minor. Turn on the television every single day and look at the accusations that are being filed against people and these corporations today. That's just a small aspect of what a Human Resources Director does. They train, they educate, they monitor, and they make sure that the company and the employees are all going in the correct direction to keep you out of a liability issue. And they're big. They're big. So if you look at the Human Resources Director as only somebody that you think is gonna worry about vacation time and sick time and training, that's not what it's about. It's not what it's about. It's a lot bigger than that. And I can tell you now, after having an apartment for three years at Imperial, trust me, every single day I pick up the phone and this just happened, and what do I need to do? And they say, "You gotta do this, and you gotta do that, you gotta do this, put this here, put this over there," to protect all the people within the company, not just, not just the company, not just the owner. Protect yourself as an individual, as a manager. So I would strongly ask you to support the Human Resources Director. I've said it since the day I got involved on the school committee. And at the time, I don't know, it was 95 million, it's 103 million today. How can you run a corporation this big and not have a Human Resources Department? How can you have over 400 employees and they don't have anybody to go talk to? That's why it's vital that we create this position, and I ask you to support it. Thank you.
Any other vote that care to be heard? Well, the question now comes upon the motion to strike HR Director from Level Two of the Wage and Salary Schedule. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The motion is defeated. Question now comes upon the Article Two, motion under Article Two. Does any vote that care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon Article Two. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Three.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by Section 108 of Chapter 41 of the general laws as follows.
Any vote that care to be heard on the dispensing of the, reading of the remainder of the motion? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Sloughman-Kinkade.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This year, the Board of Selectmen are recommending a 2% salary adjustment for the two full-time elected officials, the town clerk and the highway surveyor, and a 2% increase for all other elected officials. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Any, or the Finance Committee have a recommendation? Any other vote that care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Four.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, that the town meeting receive the report of the Finance Committee and that the moderator inquire if any voter wishes to consider any item separately, that if any voter so wishes, he or she shall ask the moderator to remove this item from the report, and when this, when this is done, that the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer where indicated in the report the amount recommended in the Finance Committee report as amended, and that the meeting shall consider the items which have been removed from the report by taking each of them up individually.
Motion's been made in second. That the town meeting receive the report of the Finance Committee and that the moderator inquire if any voter wishes to consider any item separately, that if any voter so wishes, he or she shall ask the moderator to remove this item from the report, and when this is done, that the town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer where indicated in the report the amount recommended in the Finance Committee report as amended, and that the meeting shall then consider the items which have been removed from the report by taking up each item individually. I'll now ask if any town meeting member wishes to remove any item from the Finance Committee report.
I don't know if anybody else really doesn't want to talk about anything in this Article Four, but I would like to talk about Department 155, line item 5300, the ClearGov, and also—
Wait one second. What is it now? What's the first one?
ClearGov, Department 155, line 5300, and also the Special Ops Team, Department 210. Unless we're actually gonna talk about Article 13, but my understanding is Article 13 is being passed over.
You want all line items under the Police Department, 5110, 5300, is that what you're asking? What line items do you want to remove? Why don't you circle them for me and bring it up here and then we can— You can take any line item and then you can have a motion that adjusts the salary, whatever amount it is. That's a privilege.
Article Four provides the money for it. So if you want to—
I just have a question about whether we will pass over Article 13 or not.
I don't think anyone has an answer to that. If you want to discuss the—
Okay.
If the, if Article 13 has an impact on the Police Department budget and it's passed, the money is in here apparently to take care of Article 13. So if you want to remove the Police Department budget and consider it individually for a larger amount or a smaller amount, then you remove those line items that affect the Police Department. But you should have the Finance Committee report in front of you, and just give me the line items.
It doesn't sound like anybody's interested in being a little bit helpful about whether there's a plan for Article 13.
It's an unfair question. We have, we, we're not discussing Article 13. We're discussing the budget that provides for all the articles in the warrant.
Well, in that case, I guess I won't talk about Department 210.
You want to remove all the line items under the Police Department budget, which is—
I think I just said the opposite of that. Since I don't actually know the specifics, I won't even talk about it. But I am interested in talking about 155, 5300 for ClearGov.
5300, line 147, 5300, is that what? I'm sorry. Show me where in the required.
All right, well, I'll just nix that idea. I certainly do hope that we will have a lengthy discussion about Article 13 when Article 13 comes around. Thanks.
Any other town meeting member wish to withdraw any line item to be considered individually? Hearing none, does any voter care to speak on the budget?
My fellow town meeting members, my name is Harold Rhodes, and I reside in Precinct Two. I rise quite reluctantly to request your support for the passage of the school budget that is included in, within Article Four. Why am I reluctant to ask for your support? For the most recent year, the parents of 187 children chose to send their children to another school district. In doing so, Milford taxpayers must pay $1.3 million to another school district. Over the last 10 years, Milford taxpayers have spent over $10.5 million sending school choice out students to other districts. And as such, the Milford School District now receives $1.3 million more to educate 187 students less. Many of you know that I considered placing an amendment to Article Four in order to deduct the $1.3 million from the budget, in order that taxpayers, Milford taxpayers, would not have to pay the increased taxes. The School Department told me of the catastrophe that would ensue if even the $1.3 million were to be deducted out of an over $60 million budget from all sources for this fiscal year. They told me for $1.2 million, the School Department would lose, would have to fire 20 teachers. Well, I just could not live with that. So instead, we developed an agreement with the school committee, with the school superintendent, and with the Finance Committee. And let me thank Kevin McIntyre, our school superintendent, Al Correa, Chris Moran, and Joe Calery, for all of us working together to come up with this agreement. It's, the agreement includes there will be at least three open forums held in this year that will be open to all Milford community citizens to discuss the aspects in detail of the budget for Milford School District. The Finance Subcommittee for Public Schools— The Finance Subcommittee for Public Schools will hold monthly public meetings to discuss the budget plan and the progress being made, including whether Milford taxpayers should be required to pay the cost of students who choose to attend other districts. And third, the Superintendent will finally complete the long-range educational plan for the Milford School District in 2018. This plan will include milestones, measurable objectives, and the timing to move Milford High School from a Level 3 high school to a Level 1 high school. This plan will also include milestones, measurable objectives, and timing to improve the academic success at every education band level for all students within the Milford School District. However, if the success of this agreement is not achieved, I promise to come forward next year, at next year's town meeting, with this amendment to the school budget to reimburse the Milford taxpayers for the cost of educating students in other districts. In the meantime, I urge you to vote favorably on Article 4. Thank you very much.
Any other voter care to be heard on the motion? If not, the question comes upon the motion of receiving the report of the Finance Committee and voting for the appropriations recommended in their motion. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article five. Mr. Walter.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote as follows to enact certain measures as set forth hereon, which are presented each year to the annual town meeting.
Motion was made in second, we waive the reading of the, of the motion if it's exactly as appears in the warrant, is it, are there any changes, Mr. Walsh?
No.
No changes, all right? All those in favor of the motion manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Mr. Walsh.
This article and this motion have been restructured by the Board of Selectmen at the recommendation of the Town Government Study Committee in an effort to save what has been perhaps unnecessary utilization of time at prior town meetings. This one article takes seven items, which used to be separate articles each year at the annual town meeting, and which always came forward in the same fashion, to address matters which must be voted upon on an annual basis. Doing these as separate articles simply took unnecessary time, and the Board of Selectmen concurs with the Town Government Study Committee that is a valid approach to do these as one vote, and I will briefly explain. Item A allows short-term borrowing when necessary under applicable provisions of the general laws. Item B is the annual vote which authorizes the Board of Selectmen to take charge of legal affairs. Item C allows for proper processing of parking violation monies. Item D authorizes the treasurer, the collector, to enter into what we refer to as compensating balance agreements with financial institutions if they deem such to be in the best interest of the town. Item E allows amounts that are recovered from insurance companies or third parties for damages to the town property, notwithstanding the amount to be spent directly to effectuate repair to damaged property. Item F allows for contracting for up to five years instead of limitations of three years, which would otherwise be in effect. This is necessary for simple agreements such as equipment leasing, copy machines, and such. And last, item G, the FIDAM item authorizes the treasurer to speed the process of collection of taxes in instances where a taxpayer in the arrears is willing to deed the property to the town, rather than to go through the compensing and somewhat expensive foreclosure process. I would ask for your support for this article.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article six.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer a sum of money, $7,578.43, from the excess deficiency account, said sum being consistent with the funds raised from vending machines in the Milford School District, to be spent under the jurisdiction of the School Committee for purposes of student activities not funded within the School Department budget.
Motion made in second, the town vote to transfer a sum of $7,578.43 from the excess and deficiency accounts had some to be consistent with the funds raised from vending machines at the Milford School District to be spent under the jurisdiction of the School Committee for purposes of student activities not funded in the School Department budget. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Calery.
You, what, this money is usually for, what's going to be for is, we'll see for the high school for the students to take college trips and go and get a good feel of what they're looking for for colleges. I look for your support for this vote.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article seven. Mr. DeLuzio.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to amend Article 1 of the general bylaws of the town by adding a new second paragraph thereto, which paragraph shall read as follows. The time set for the commencement of the annual town meeting or any adjourned session thereof shall be 7:00 p.m.
Motion made in second, the town vote to amend Article 1 of the general bylaws of the town by adding a new sec, second paragraph thereto, which paragraph shall read as follows. The time set for the commencement of the annual town meeting or any adjourned session thereof shall be 7:00 p.m. Is the Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. DeLuzio.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, as stated in the committee's annual report, the town meeting survey indicated that 82% of the 192 respondents favored a start time of 7:00 for all town meetings. However, according to state statute, the town meeting is only authorized to establish the start time of the annual town meeting. Setting the start time of the special town meeting is solely within the Selectmen's authority to establish by policy. The committee met with the Selectmen, and they voted to establish a policy to start all meetings at 7:00. It is anticipated that this motion to start a little earlier, together with the committee's recommendation to the Selectmen to combine several routine articles into Article 1, into one article, which was Article 5, which was just passed, and Article 8, which would end the town meeting around 10:00, will all help to avoid late-night sessions. I look forward to your favorable vote on this motion.
Any other voter care to be heard? If, if not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article H. Mr. DeLuzio.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to add a new standing vote of the Milford Town Meeting by inserting a standard vote to be entitled Town Meeting Ending Time as follows. After 10:00 p.m., and in the absence of a majority vote of town meeting so permitting, no motion may be made under any article other than the article then under debate may be made.
Motion made in second, that the town vote to add a new standing vote of the Milford Town Meeting by inserting a standing vote to be entitled Town Meeting Ending Time as follows. After 10:00 p.m., and in the absence of a majority vote of town meeting so permitting, no motion made under any article other than the article then under debate may be made. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. DeLuzio.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, the motion I just made is different than that in the warrant due to a clerical error in preparing the warrant. The committee had been considering two options, and both were inadvertently included in the warrant, so please strike the first sentence. This motion is in response to the town meeting survey, in which 71% of the 192 respondents strongly and somewhat agree that meetings are too long. The purpose of this motion is to end the meeting at around 10:00. Currently, our town meeting ends when a voting member of the town meeting, including the Board of Selectmen, feels, feels that it has gone on long enough and takes the initiative to make a motion to adjourn. On a number of occasions, meetings have run past 11:00 with no motion to adjourn being offered. This rule takes a more active approach to ending the meeting at a reasonable hour than is, than is the current custom, by establishing a definitive time beyond which no article can be introduced, and by requiring a motion to continue. The motion before you is a rule adopted by the town of Amherst in the 1990s. Their process in implementing this rule stops the meeting when the last article introduced prior to 10:00 is concluded. The moderator then entertains a motion to continue to the next article. This process would be repeated for every article until no further motions are made to continue. Hearing no further motions to continue, the moderator then will entertain pre-arranged a motion from a member of the Board of Selectmen to adjourn to a future date and time. The motion to continue and the motion to adjourn are both debatable and require a majority vote. Consultation with our moderator indicated that he can accommodate this rule. In conclusion, a number of factors deserve consideration in voting for this rule. We are not unique in establishing such a rule. Research found six other towns had similar rules. This rule has been time-tested and demonstrated by the town of Amherst. The introduction of a defined stopping point to decide, to continue, or adjourn eliminates the uncertainty of relying on a member's judgment or that of the Board of Selectmen that the meeting has gone on long enough and it is time to make a motion to adjourn. And finally, this rule respects the facts that we are all volunteers and most have regular jobs. Many sacrifice evenings with our families to participate in town meeting. Many have real-time constraints while they are considering the town's business. Some examples include rising to get to work, long workdays, and the need by some members to provide childcare. I look forward to your favorable vote on this motion.
Any other voter care to be heard? Yes.
I have to take a seat, Reno. Taryn Barlow, Precinct 1. I guess I have a question that doesn't always get, have a direct answer. In deciding whether a meeting should end on a committed Monday for which we know we are attending, and we have made the decision to run for this position, is there a set make-up time to be consistently established as not to say, well, maybe it's a Monday, or maybe it's a Wednesday, maybe it's a Friday? So that the commitment in deciding to run is you will have the meeting on Monday, but if it ends at 10:00, you will also have to make up the time on Wednesday? So that way, the people deciding to run can make that choice, knowing they may or may not have two-night commitments to attend the meeting. That way, we can be appropriately scheduled, because all of our time is definitely divided. So, thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. DeLuzio.
That was an excellent comment. In fact, the committee also considered that, another proposal that's under the Selectmen's jurisdiction to approve, and that is to advance set two days twice a year for town meeting, a Monday and Wednesday as we have here in May, and a Monday and Wednesday as we usually have in October or early November. The Selectmen have, and so, just to address that previous speaker, so families can plan their schedules on vacations and so forth, when the two town meetings are going to occur, and they're likely to occur over two evenings. So that was an excellent question. I hope I clarified it, and hopefully the Selectmen will set those dates early enough so that we can plan our family time.
Yes.
Taryn Barlow, Precinct 1. So at this time, I would ask the body to wait until that amendment is set, so that all of us can appropriately schedule, so we may attend what may be one or two meetings until both of those decisions are on paper, so we can be here to attend. So I ask you to not accept this article at this time.
Any other voter care to be heard? Yes. Mr. Leoj.
Josh Leoj, Precinct 6. Just a quick question. I believe I heard Mr. DeLuzio say there was going to be a motion after every question, or is it a motion at the end of 10:00 just to continue to finish the meeting, or is it one after every question?
There is nothing in the motion to prohibit a motion to extend to the last article. However, as we all know, when you get to this town meeting, it's very hard to predict when that next article will tie us up for another hour. So the, the practice in Amherst, which I said has been time-tested since 1990, the moderator takes a motion after every article, and it goes very quickly. I've watched some videos of their town meeting. So it doesn't take long to move from article to article, and that's probably the best way, so that it doesn't get under control if we have four or five articles left. Obviously, if we have two and they look like bookkeeping articles, that's a simple case. But the case is, some, some motion can come up like five minutes of 10:00, that could take us to 10:30, and then we're off and running, and then try to take the rest of the meeting in one article. But that's something I hope the moderator will work it, work out between now and October. This doesn't take effect until October.
Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Buckland.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, the Board of Selectmen have not discussed what the alternate day might be. It's a legitimate question, and understandable that town meeting members would want to know. Are we going to shoot for every Wednesday following the Monday town meeting if we had to regroup if we went too long? The Board of Selectmen supported this, this initiative, and I know, speaking on behalf of myself, the rationale behind it was, let's try it. And in part, because everybody reaches a point of diminishing return at some point during the evening. For those that are, are working, getting up early, as the previous speaker, one of the previous speakers spoke, discussed, it gets harder and harder, and at 11:00 at night, I'd argue that some of us aren't making our best decisions. So it's an intent to give the time that it's, that it's required, to give each of the speakers the time they need, and to allow this body the time to deliberate in the way that, that we ought to. So it's for that purpose that I'd recommend passage of this article, knowing that we can always come back and make adjustments. That was my rationale then, it's my rationale now, and I'd ask for your support. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? Member in Precinct 7 right there.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Soares, Precinct 7. I actually had a question for the moderator. Do the rules of this body allow for the suspension of any rule for a set time limit? For instance, if we see that there's 10 articles left, rather than vote for each article to continue, can we suspend the rule for a set time limit, say, of 30 minutes? Thank you.
In answer to the question, I suppose we can. Yes, I suppose we can. I mean, I know Reno's going to be upset at me, but my, my position on, on this would be, very simply, any voter can make, any town meeting member can make a motion to adjourn, and then it's up to the body or those present to decide whether they want to...
those present to decide whether they want to adjourn to Wednesday or keep going. This is an attempt by, you know, the committee, and the committee has studied this and decided that they'd like to, you know, have ten o'clock as the time to continue to go on with each article, and deciding how many articles we have remaining, whether we want to consider each one. So, I believe you can... I believe the... I don't think there's any problem with the motion as presented. But as I said, for many years, we've just had a motion to adjourn, debatable. Do you want to stay here, or do you want to go home? That's the first time I've ever probably spoken on an article and what my feelings were. Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes on the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article nine. Mr. Deluzio. I move that the town vote to amend the standing vote of the town entitled Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee by striking the entry under Committee Vacancies and replacing such entry with the following. When a position on the committee becomes vacant for any reason, the moderator shall appoint a new member in the following order until the requisite number of members is reached. Reappointment of a member who has been re-elected and is still willing to serve for not more than two consecutive terms from amongst those applicants who are on file with the town clerk and who are still willing to serve, and then from the town meeting body. The moderator shall appoint a member from each precinct where possible. The term of office shall be as specified in Section B Term of Office. Motion made in second of the town vote to amend the standing vote of the town entitled Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee by striking the entry under Committee Vacancies and replacing such entry with the following. When a position on the committee becomes vacant for any reason, the moderator shall appoint a new member in the following order until the requisite number of members is reached. Reappoint a member who has been re-elected and is still willing to serve for not more than two consecutive terms from amongst those applicants who are on file with the town clerk and are still willing to serve from the town meeting body. The moderator shall appoint a member from each precinct where possible. The term of office shall be as specified in Section B Term of Office. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any voter here to be heard? Reno? Mr. Moderator. At the October two thousand and seventeen special town meeting, a motion was made to establish a town meeting study and improvement committee. An amendment was then offered and passed that changed the method of filling vacancies. The main motion was then passed as amended. The October two thousand and seventeen amendment seemed to be a minor change, and I chose not to oppose it. However, in retrospect, that turned out to be a poor choice, and that it resulted in a number of unintended consequences. The purpose of this motion is to restore the requirement for filling vacancies as was specified in the October two thousand and seventeen motion prior to it being amended. The original priority for filling vacancies was for the moderator to first reappoint from those who are currently serving, and second, to appoint from the pool of applicants. The October two thousand and seventeen amendment changed the priority to first appoint from the pool of applicants, and second, to appoint those who were currently serving. Since a committee member's term expires when their town meeting term expires, the committee will lose two key members who are currently serving if the October two thousand and seventeen priority is allowed to stand. The two members are Mr. Michelangelo Bontempo from Precinct Eight and Dr. Richard Heller from Precinct One. Both of these gentlemen served on the Former Citizens for Milford Town Meeting Working Group. The knowledge and experience they acquired during this survey phase will no longer be part of the committee's deliberations during this implementation phase. In addition, Mr. Bontempo is the clerk of the committee. As anyone who has chaired a committee knows, no one wants to serve as clerk. Both men are also actively involved in two of the committee's eight subcommittees. Mr. Bontempo is chairing a subcommittee charged with developing a town meeting handbook for us. Dr. Heller is on the subcommittee looking into improving the audio experience. In addition, they have been members of this committee for only three and a half months. Finally, the reason given for the October two seventeen, two thousand and seventeen priority was to limit the time served in order to bring new members to the committee and thereby bring in new ideas. I can report that the committee has addressed both of these concerns. First, let me say that it has been my experience in serving on and chairing committees that continuity of service is as important as fostering new ideas. One should not have to be sacrificed for the other, especially if there are ways to achieve both. Regarding term limits to bring new members to the committee, the committee addressed this concern by the introduction of two consecutive term maximum reappointment provisions in this motion. Natural attrition is also a contributor to committee membership turnover. Thus far, two committee resignations have been filled from the pool of applicants, and one more recent resignation is about to be filled. Regarding the introduction of new ideas, the committee has addressed this concern by organizing itself around the proactive policy of soliciting the pool of applicants to participate and serve on subcommittees. The committee's performance over these past three and a half months has demonstrated its commitment to the openness and inclusion policy, in that five applicants have signed on to participate, and with them came a plethora of new ideas. There are no obstacles to introducing new ideas, and it's very easy to get a seat on the table. Just fill the application that was sent to you with the warrant, or it's available on the website. In conclusion, as you can see from the committee's annual report, we have a full plate. There is ample opportunity for more of you to participate, and we could indeed use the help. Currently, the nine committee members, together with the five participating applicants, constitutes only six percent of the town meeting elected membership. This level of participation is not commensurate with your desire to improve and preserve our town meeting as reflected in the survey. Of special note, there is no application from Precinct Six. Bottom line is that we could at least use six more applicants who are willing to participate. So in addition to asking you to vote favorably on this motion, I strongly recommend you seriously consider submitting an application and help the committee make the town meeting improvement initiative a success. You have fifteen seconds left, Mr. Deluzio. Any other voter here to be heard on the motion? Yes.
Hi. Brian Cole, Precinct Eight. I'm the guilty party. I'm the one who proposed the amendment last October. At the time, I argued that if we really want to preserve town meeting for the next generation, we should be encouraging the participation of new people, new voices with new ideas. I felt then, and I feel now, that the proposed ordering makes it more difficult for new voices to be heard. Furthermore, if the committee feels that the so-called participating applicant role is sufficient for new members to make their voices heard, I would ask why they then feel the need to propose this change at all, rather than allowing former members to serve in participating applicant or member emeritus roles. I therefore ask that you vote against Article Nine as presented. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard? Mr. Deluzio. Look, if this motion doesn't pass, those two people that I mentioned are no longer going to be able to contribute their expertise and service. In addition, the problem gets worse a year from now. We're going to lose four new members because their town meeting term expires. So this motion is important to preserve continuity. I've been serving on committees for practically all my adult life, and continuity is very important. We develop expertise as we go along. People working on projects, they get halfway through, this rule would have them expire if someone else takes over. It would make my job a lot harder. So I believe this committee is open, transparent. There's plenty of opportunity for new ideas. We have a website. You can email us, tell us what you think, what you like, what you don't like, and we entertain every idea. We have a system of statements of work for every topic that was pointed out in the survey. And those statements of work have included all those ideas that have come forward from both the committee and the participating applicants. So we have plenty of ideas. All we need now is the people to implement them. Thank you. Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article ten. Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend the standing votes of the town meeting by inserting a new standing vote entitled Speaker Time, which shall provide as follows. Except with the consent of two-thirds of the town meeting members present and voting, initial presentation of articles by sponsors shall not exceed ten minutes in total, whether presented by one individual or several. A vote to extend a presentation will be for another ten-minute period. Except with... Item two. Except with the consent of two-thirds of the town meeting members present and voting, no person addressing the town meeting for the first time on any article shall speak for more than five minutes, and subsequent statements or presentations by the same person shall not exceed three minutes each, nor exceed three in number. A speaker's concise... Item three. A speaker's concise response to the question directed to him by or through the moderator shall not be considered a speech for purposes of this standing vote. Motion made in second of the town vote to amend the standing vote of the town meeting by inserting a new standing vote entitled Speaker Time, which shall provide as follows. One, except with the consent of two-thirds of the town meeting members present and voting, initial presentation of articles by sponsors shall not exceed ten minutes in total, whether presented by one individual or several. A vote to extend a presentation will be for another ten-minute period. Except with the consent of two-thirds of the town meeting members present and voting, no person addressing the town meeting for the first time on any article shall speak for more than five minutes, and subsequent statements or presentations by the same person shall not exceed three minutes each, nor exceed three in number. A speaker's concise response to the question directed to him by or through the moderator shall not be considered a speech for purposes of this standing vote. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Favorable.
Any voter here to be heard? Mr. Deluzio. Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. Again, this motion is a response to the survey question wherein seventy-four percent strongly and somewhat agree that an individual's speaking time per article should be regulated. The purpose of this motion is intended to limit the amount of time a person can speak on each article. Based upon review of speaker time rules of five towns, the Framingham Town Meeting Rule was the preferred model because it allotted the presenter of the motion more time to present his or her argument for the motion versus the time allotted to a member debating the motion. For example, notwithstanding a two-thirds vote requesting additional time, nineteen minutes is the max time allotted to the presenter of the motion versus a max time of fourteen minutes allotted to a member debating the motion. In addition, the Framingham Rule was chosen because it was adopted by an amendment to their general bylaws, was approved by the Attorney General, and has been time-tested. I urge you a favorable vote on this article. Any other voter here to be heard? Yes. Mr. Visconti.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Visconti from Precinct Eight. In the interest of full disclosure, it should be known that I am a former member of the Town Meeting Working Group, and also a former member of the Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee. I was opposed to this article while I was on that committee, and I am opposed to it Town meeting... This is not how representative town meeting works. Everyone here should have the opportunity to speak to an article, regardless of how many times they've spoken on it. If this article passes, it contradicts the basic principles of representative town meeting. You are here tonight and future town meetings to speak and represent the voters of your precinct who elected you. This article seeks to muffle your voices. The previous speaker spoke about the survey that was conducted and the response from town meeting members looking to limit speaker time. As you can see, what happened here tonight, and has happened in the last several town meetings, a simple motion at the beginning of the meeting limiting speaker time to five minutes suffices to do what this article seeks to do. It has happened in the past several town meetings, and it has worked flawlessly. I suggest to you that you defeat this article. No statements made at this podium should be allowed to stand without at least the opportunity for any one of you to address the comments made at this podium, whether in support or opposition, or to clarify, regardless of how many times you have spoken here tonight. Please. This is not representative town meeting. This is not Milford. This is not you. Please vote no on this article. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard? Mr. Deluzio. I beg to differ with my friend, a previous speaker. This does not... This article does not give you... Does not limit your power to speak for as long as you like. All you have to do is get the town meeting members to approve it. If you need your time to be extended, you can ask for extended time, and the town meeting takes a two-thirds vote. If the two-thirds of the town meeting believes you have more to say and should continue, then you would be given the extra time. So, the survey, in my view, was strong. It said people go on too long. It should be controlled and regulated. It's not limited. We can't limit free speech. That's unconstitutional, and we don't propose to do that. So this provision to get more time, all we have to do is make a conscious decision to grant that time. Any other voter here to be heard? Yes. Mr. Sores is...
Generally, I agree with the intent of this article. I'm a little concerned with the language. My concern is with the allowing of the speaker to continue his speech with the consent of two-thirds vote. I think the article is trying to speed up the process of town meeting, and I think it will just slow it down and cause delay if every time someone hits five minutes, we ask for a two-thirds vote, and we see how long a two-thirds vote can take. And if you multiply that by multiple speakers, or a single speaker coming up here multiple times and asking for a two-thirds vote every single time he or she has met their limit, it could significantly delay the process of town meeting. Like the previous speaker said, the motion at the beginning of the meeting to limit speeches to five minutes, it works really well. Town moderator does a great job of monitoring the time, and it's worked really well the last few meetings, and I think that is enough to get the intent of this article accomplished. Thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard? Mr. Wheelock.
Expedience is not the end-all-and-be-all purpose of town meeting. This article appears to be tailor-written to deal with approximately three citizens, which in itself is quite problematic, okay? Let's admit that there is not actually many, many people who talk at great length. There is less than a handful. The real problem, as I see it with town meeting, is not too many long talkers, but too few citizens willing to talk at all. It's worth pointing out that many of the issues that get voted on at town meeting have been talked about for hours by town boards... have been talked about for hours by town boards and often lawyers and developers and other business interests related to the issues that ultimately end up before us, to be talked about by us laypeople. None of these people at those hours and hours of meetings choose to be limiting themselves to speaking—to speaking limits. To the contrary, they talk and meet until some resolution. Then there are public hearings. When the hearings—when those meetings go far enough to have public hearings, there'll be public hearings, which draw some citizen participation. But honestly, there is remarkably little input from the general population on many, many issues before it comes to town meeting. I hope nobody's surprised to hear that. The idea that a group that claims to be supporters of town meeting are working to limit speech in any way is the antithesis to the idea of town meeting. To limit public speaking for laypeople with the full knowledge that commercial interests and everybody else I was talking about have essentially unlimited ability to speak to further their interests while us laypeople are limited in the amount of speaking that we can do and how often we can get up is an absolutely horrible idea. This proposal also sends a message from—that says, "Laypeople, ordinary people, are not worth listening to anywhere near as much as the special important people who have proposed these things." There's a real us-versus-them issue going on here that should make a lot of people uncomfortable. I know I'm voting against this, and I hope a lot, a lot, a lot of you will vote against this because, like multiple other speakers have said, actually the moderator does a perfectly good job reminding people to stay on topic. And I totally oppose the five-minute process that started this meeting and has started other previous meetings, and I believe this is formalizing that process, which is a big mistake. We don't have a problem of too many talkers. We have a problem of too few people willing to get up here and speak up, all right? Say no to this proposal and consider getting up and speaking more often.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. All those in favor rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one. Precinct one, six in favor, nine opposed. Precinct two. Precinct two, eleven in favor, four opposed. Precinct three. Precinct three, thirteen in favor, eight opposed. Precinct four. Precinct four, thirteen in favor, seven opposed. Precinct five. Precinct five, nine in favor, thirteen opposed. Precinct six. Precinct six, fourteen in favor, seven opposed. Precinct seven. Precinct ten, ten in favor, eight opposed. Precinct eight. Precinct eight, eight in favor, nine opposed. At large. Thirteen in favor, five opposed. Ninety-seven having voted the affirmative, seventy in the negative. The motion has been carried. Article eleven.
Mr. Buckley. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I vote that the town vote to transfer the sum of $300,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be added to those sums previously appropriated to be utilized for the legal, engineering, or other expert consulting services necessary to effectuate the final acquisition and transfer of the Milford Water Company and its assets to the town of Milford.
Motion made in second of the town vote to transfer the sum of $300,000 from the excess and deficiency accounts, said sum to be added to those sums previously appropriated to be utilized for the legal, engineering, or other expert consulting services necessary to effectuate the final acquisition and transfer of the Milford Water Company and its assets to the town of Milford. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As town meeting members know, we've mailed out letters to you to let you know in both December and just recently in the last week where the town of Milford was in their process of acquisition of the Milford Water Company. The Board of Letter—the Board of Selectmen and the Milford Water Company signed a letter of intent, allowing the town to buy the Milford Water Company for $63 million. That's what we represented to you, this body. And what this body did was nearly unanimously support the acquisition of the water company, believing that it should be in the—in the hands of the Milford residents rather—rather than a private company. The town then performed substantial due diligence, which included investigating and reviewing all of the water company's assets as well as its financial statements. I personally believe that the Milford Water Company was testing the town's resolve, waiting for your vote to pull out of the letter of intent. I can't prove that, but it isn't—it isn't the way that we had positioned this when we represented the acquisition to you and to this body. As we said before, the charter of the Milford Water Company has within it—and contained within it from the legislation enacted in the late 1800s—a perpetual right for the town to buy it. The town is now—it continues to seek the—the acquisition of the Milford Water Company and to do so through the legislative process outlined. In other words, we tried a method where we mediated, we tried a method where we worked with them. Now we're going to—through the process outlined in its charter and through the SJC and through the DPU. This process will allow us to acquire the assets of the Milford Water Company without its debt and liabilities. In other words, it's an asset-based purchase, not a stock-based purchase, for a price determined by the DPU. The town will have the ability, that is, this body will have the ability, to either accept or reject that number. The town has filed a position to the right—with the—to begin the regulatory process, which will include a presentation of witnesses, documents, and the filing of legal briefs. We have included the needed consultants, which include Brown and Rudnick to handle the litigation, Woodward and Curran, an engineering firm and concentric advisors, utility financial experts. This article represents the $300,000 necessary to fund these experts and to go forward through the regulatory process to purchase the Milford Water Company. I urge your support of this article. Thank you.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Visconti.
Another 300 grand out of your pockets. The acquisition of the Milford Water Company has been mishandled since day one. Previous consultants hired by the town at the cost of thousands of dollars to the taxpayers, and their—their reports have been ignored, including but not limited to the decision to pay in excess of $20—$20 million more for the water company than it was—than we were recommended to pay for it. These are the types of things that happen when you have no business plan in place and you enter into these types of negotiations. Your Board of Selectmen said no business plan was required. The business plan, they said, would be adopted after the purchase of the water company. Well, this is what you have now when you have no business plan. But they don't need a business plan because they know that all they have to do is come here and dip into the pockets of the taxpayers for another 300,000 for consultants that they may or may not listen to. My—my guess is they probably will not listen to. Please. This will go on and on. You—they will be back here for more and more money. This will continue until you, the people here tonight, stop this insanity. Please vote no on this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Buckley.
Hopefully through this process, we've tried to communicate with you and be as transparent and honest as possible. It was our belief that the letter of intent that the Milford Water Company signed would take us to a point where we could acquire the Milford Water Company and do it in the process we had established and spoke to you about. We can only represent one half of the decision-making body, that is, you. We can't represent the Milford Water Company. It's my contention that the people dipping into somebody's pockets have been the Milford Water Company for our substandard service. I'd urge you to continue to support this effort. Thank you very much.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article 14. I'm sorry, Article 12. I'm sorry. Article 12. I want to skip over Article 13. Mr. Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, I move that the town vote to amend the pay raises for the Milford Water Company Department employees as set forth under Article Eight of the October 30, 2017 town meeting—a special town meeting by increasing each pay rate thereunder by 2%. Otherwise, the vote under said Article Eight to remain in full force and in effect.
Motion made in second of the town vote to amend the pay rates for the Milford Water Department employees as set forth under Article Eight of the October 30, 2017 special town meeting by increasing each pay rate thereunder by 2%. Otherwise, the vote under said Article Eight to remain in full force and effect. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Buckley.
Very simply put, this body approved a set of pay scales for the Milford Water Company employees. If we were to not act on this, and even prior to them becoming employees, should that go through the regulatory process and this body approve it, they would be in the rears if we were not to keep it up to speed. So it's our intent to keep it up—to the current state of other town employees and make sure those positions—not those employees—get funded to the right level. We're looking for a 2% increase to those positions, and I'd hope you would support this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Yes.
Town meeting members, Mike Abuso from Precinct One. I just have a question. If the DPU process could take at least nine months before we even decide whether we're going to acquire the Milford Water Company, why are we looking at pay raises for this year? Thank you.
Mr. Buckley.
It's basically to set the rates for those positions. So there is a chance that prior to any special town meeting next year, those rates would be depressed if we were not—to act on this now before town meeting could vote again next April. Thank you very much.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Yes. Right in Precinct Three.
Kate Mastriani, Precinct Three. I have a question for the selectmen. Given the fact that the water company has not exactly been working in good faith with the town, my question would be, in the event that they significantly raised the pay structure of their employees before we acquired them, would the 2% COLA still go into effect?
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Buckley.
Good question. This—this article and this—this raise is not impacted at all by what the Milford Water Company does. This is solely set by the town of Milford in determining the—the wages for various positions that would be—would become town employees should we acquire it, but is not in any way influenced by the—the wages should they change at the Milford Water Company.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article 13. Well, stand up. A motion to pass over? All right. There's a motion to pass over Article 13, which is to take no action on the article as inserted in the warrant. Any vote to care to be heard on the motion to pass over? If not, the ques—yes, Mr. Wheelock.
Procedurally, I'm not entirely sure what we're doing here right now, but making sure that people who do want to talk about the wisdom of the special ops team, $675,000 for the first year, $3,300,000 over five years, gets a few minutes of discussion. Through some procedural stuff, the fiscal part of Article 13 was rolled into the police department's budget, which is where it's supposed to be, but I hope the people in this room want to spend a few minutes talking about whether we really want the special ops team. In other words, we should not be passing over this because I believe that we've fully funded Article 13 in the police department budget, and we deserve to talk about it. So let's not pass over this. If I'm correct in understanding that, we have fully funded the subject of Article 13 but rolled it into the police department budget, so it's hard to see and hard to talk about. Let's spend a few minutes talking about Article 13 and the special ops team, please.
Any other vote to care to be heard on the motion to pass over?
Let's make sure we don't accept the pass over.
Any other vote to care to be heard on the motion to pass over and take no action on Article 13 as inserted? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article 13. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. All those in favor rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All—all those opposed rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed, rise or remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one. Precinct one, eleven in favor, four opposed. Precinct two.
Nine in favor, seven opposed.
Precinct two, nine in favor, seven opposed. Precinct three. Thirteen in favor, seven opposed. Precinct four.
Fourteen in favor, seven opposed.
Precinct four, fourteen in favor, seven opposed. Precinct five.
Fifteen in favor, eight opposed.
Precinct five, fifteen in favor, eight opposed. Precinct...
What abstentions?
Well, we don't count abstentions. Precinct six.
Seventeen in favor, four opposed.
Precinct six, seventeen in favor, four opposed. Precinct seven.
Eleven in favor, five opposed.
Precinct seven, eleven in favor, five opposed. Precinct eight.
Eighteen in favor, four opposed.
I'm sorry.
Oneteen in favor, four opposed.
Fourteen in favor, two opposed. At large?
Fifteen in favor, none opposed.
One hundred nineteen having voted in the affirmative, forty-four in the negative, the motion to pass over has been carried.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be spent under jurisdiction of the school committee, school committee for the purpose of renovating the 1973 high school walk-in freezer and refrigerator that stores all the perishable frozen foods and school food services department, replacing some with new facilities.
Motion made second of the town vote to transfer the sum eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the school committee for the purposes of removing the 1973 high school walk-in freezer and refrigerator that stores all perishable frozen foods for the school food service department and replacing the same with new facilities. Mr. Calery.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Both existing refrigerator and freezer units are well over forty-five years old and are made of wood constructed materials. Over time, moisture and increased negatively, I'm sorry, negatively impacted and insulated in wood frame boxes, which has deteriorated, and it is now in need of replacement. The high school is the main kitchen for the district with the storage of frozen food, refrigerated and non-perishables are stored. The high school is also the town shelter. Look forward for your vote.
Finance committee, have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of fifty thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be utilized under the jurisdiction of the school committee to replace the school playground services to be completed with the proposed new playground regulations.
Motion made second of the town vote to transfer the sum of fifty thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be utilized under the jurisdiction of the school committee to replace school playground services to be compliant with proposed new playground regulations. Finance committee?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Calery.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a heads up, just to let you know, the Memorial School is the only school that does not have a functioning playground. New regulations are being evaluated that will increase the availability of the playground to children with special needs. We look forward to your vote.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Town clerk, Amy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of forty-eight thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be utilized to purchase new election machines.
Motion made in second of the town vote to transfer the sum of forty-eight thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said some to be utilized to purchase new election machines. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Our town clerk did not have to act like the previous town clerk, Mr. Akuti, and jump off the stage and address the podium there, so we granted her the exemption. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, the intent of this article is to appropriate funds to replace our current election tabulator machines that are used to tabulate all ballots for all of our elections in the town of Milford. The current machines are quite worn and have been used beyond their useful life. They are being serviced with refurbished parts and can no longer be guaranteed to be serviced going forward. This has been on our capital improvement plan for some time. However, with the additional wear and tear from the two unexpected special elections followed by this past April election and two more upcoming elections this year, I must ask for the appropriation now. I urge for your support. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion... Yes.
Kate Mastriani, Precinct Three. I just have two questions for the town clerk. Is it the same style machine that provides a paper trail, and will it be free of an internet connection so that they're freestanding machines?
Like the current machines we have, they do have a tabulation tape, and they are not They have separate media cards, so they are separate from the internet. Yes. Yes.
Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Yes, Mr. Kinke.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to amend the vote under Article sixty-one of the March sixteenth, nineteen fifty-nine annual town meeting pursuant to which the personnel board was established by providing that the personnel board shall consist of five members, one of whom shall be the human resources director appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and the other four members...
Yes, for what purpose? No, I think it's short enough that we can read it. Go ahead, continue.
Sure. By the Board of Selectmen and the other four members, no person serving as a town employee, town official, a member of any commission or board, whether serving in an elective or appointed capacity, shall be eligible for such membership. The Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen shall make all appointments and fill all vacancies as they may from time to time occur. All appointments to fill expired terms shall be made for a term of five years, and all appointments made to fill unexpired terms shall be only for the remainder of that unexpired term. If, at the time of this vote, the Personnel Board consists of five active members, the least senior member may be removed by the Board of Selectmen in order to accommodate the human resources director.
Finance committee, have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any voter care to be heard, Mr. Kinke?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, the Board of Selectmen have approved a new position for the town of, town human resources director. This article seeks to amend the personnel bylaws to allow the human resources director to be a member of the Personnel Board. The director will be responsible for providing direction on wage and salary administration, position descriptions and classifications, policy administration, grievance procedure administration, and performance evaluations. In addition, they will develop recruitment procedures and direct recruitment efforts, advertise and post vacancies, review applications, work with department heads to interview candidates, and make recommendations of candidates. They will attend all Personnel Board meetings, convey all relevant issues to the Personnel Board for policy direction, advice and recommendations, as well as prepare all necessary supporting data for Personnel Board members. Therefore, it is important that he or she be a working member of the Personnel Board. There is currently a vacancy on the board due to a recent resignation, and I ask for your support of this article. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, personnel, I mean, town meeting members, my name is Charlie Abrahamson. I'm a precinct member in Precinct Four, and I'm a member of the Personnel Board. In 2015, at my first meeting as chairman of the Personnel Board, I discussed the need for a human resources department and possibly eliminating the Personnel Board. After researching HR departments and Personnel Boards for the past few years, I see the need for both. We especially need an independent board that represents the remaining town employees who do not have the protection and services of a union. It is important also for the town to establish a human resources department. Personnel Board and town administrator cannot provide the needed resources of an HR department. Personnel Board meets monthly and has limited responsibilities, as defined by law. The town administrator has way too many other responsibilities to do justice to performing the duties of an HR department. As a member of the Personnel Board and as a town meeting member, I cannot agree that an HR director should be a voting member of the Personnel Board and thereby eliminating an appointed member of the board. The first time that I heard, and possibly the rest of my board heard, about this amendment to our own bylaws was when the warrant was published. No one had come to us to discuss this. Since 1959, when the Personnel Board was established, the town has not allowed... Oops, I got mixed up here. Has not allowed a town employee to be a member of the board. The board should be an independent entity, not subject to political decisions or political influences. Originally, the terms of the board members were staggered over five years, partly so that different boards of selectmen would be appointing new members. A position such as an HR director, which would be involved in contract negotiations, benefit negotiations, salary decisions, and job descriptions, should not be a voting member of the Personnel Board on decisions made on a daily basis as part of his job, his or her job as an HR director. Currently, position requests, job descriptions, and salary requests are presented to, by the department heads and town administrators. Under the proposed job description for HR director, which partly was read by this previous selectman, speech was, I'm going to repeat it and I'm going to quote it, "This position shall provide direction on all HR functions for town personnel, with the exception of school personnel, to include but not be limited to wage and salary administration, position descriptions and classifications, policy administration, grievance procedure administration, program administration, and performance evaluations." Other principal responsibilities include, quote, "Attends meetings of the Personnel Board, conveys all relevant issues to the Board for policy direction, advice, and recommendations, and prepares all necessary supporting data for Personnel Board members." I've been researching towns that have both a Personnel Board and an HR department, and to date have not found any town where the HR director is a voting member of the Personnel Board. The HR director works with the Board, both as an advisor and a resource for data, and serves as a liaison with the administration. The HR director, based upon background experience, day-to-day involvement, and interaction with all departments, should be an advisor and a partner with the Personnel, but not a voting member. The job description states that the director will be seeking policy direction, advice, and recommendations from the Board. I don't want policy and salary decisions made for town employees under Article Two and others, if it comes to that, if changes are made in the future, to be voted on by the person that's initiating the decisions. I recommend that you please defeat Article seventeen.
Any other voter care to be heard?
Al Correa, Precinct Five. I stand here, and I know I'm not the sharpest tool in the shed, but once again, when it comes down to personnel matters, I am totally confused. Two and a half years ago, we went through paying a consultant to tell us that we were competitive, that the town meeting had voted in competitive bands, but we had to totally rearrange our bands so we'd be competitive. And I could never figure out, if we are competitive, why do we have to change everything to be competitive? Then a month ago, we're told, forget what he said, he didn't know what he was doing. We want to change everything again and go back and not give a step increase, which I have a problem, because if I promise you something, I think as a town, we have to live up to it. And then I'm listening again tonight, and I'm totally confused. Now, my hat's off to the Personnel Board. They do the best they can, and I can rationalize this by saying we're a hundred-million-dollar corporation. We don't want political influence because the selectmen would appoint an HR director. Well, wait a minute. Don't the selectmen appoint the Personnel Board? So why is it that the people they appoint and call personnel aren't influence-able, but the person who they don't call personnel is? Again, too many times, and it could be, I'm just slow, I like simple, easy answers. I want somebody who's a professional. We hired a professional financier. We set up a group of financial people, and it served us well, more than well. Why don't we want the same? Now, I can rationalize it, saying a hundred million dollars and all that good stuff. And by the way, I heard that HR people aren't part of the management team, except in municipalities. Well, that's kind of confusing. Again, I'm a little slow here, but every company, I've been part of senior management, we had HR right there. And ladies and gentlemen, I am worried about how we treat our non-union employees. I don't care what they're called. They're Milford people. They're working for Milford. I want to make sure that a professional, whose sole job is to watch out for them, takes care of them. And this union, non-union stuff, again, doesn't influence me because you all have made sure that we're always fair, and we don't put union, non-union tags. Please, put in a professional, just like we've done in other departments, so that slow people like me can understand clearly what it means. Thank you.
Any other voter care to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Regarding the previous speaker's comment regarding who was the most influence-able, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, I can tell you this. If I'm an HR person, and my ninety-thousand-dollar job is at risk unless I kneel to the selectmen, as opposed to I'm a hard-working Personnel Board member making zero dollars, I think the ninety-thousand-dollar HR employee is more likely to be influenced by the selectmen than the Personnel Board member. Please defeat this article.
Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Carroll.
Dennis Carroll, Chair of the Personnel Board. There's been several comments made that I disagree with, but I won't go over those.
Mr. Carroll, microphone.
Speaking to the microphones. Certainly. Is that better? I'm in favor of the HR director. I think that position is required. I think it's needed, and I would love to have that person sit in on the Personnel Board meetings. I believe that they should be a liaison to the Personnel Board. There's communication that takes place through other boards that does not filter down to the Personnel Board, and this person would be an asset for that. I do not agree that this person should be a voting member. I think that it's important to keep the independence of the Personnel Board, that the members should not be employees of the town, and they should not have any influence on the vote of the Personnel Board unless they are not, if they are Personnel Board members and not employees of the town. I think it would be a mistake to make this person a voting member of the Personnel Board. a voting member of the Personnel Board. Please defeat the article.
Any other vote to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes. Mr. Bontempo.
Town Meeting Members, Mr. Moderator, Mike Bontempo, Precinct Four. I rise in opposition to this motion. By the logic that the Board of Selectmen is putting forward, I think the next town meeting, we should have an article that would put the Finance Director as a voting member of the Finance Committee. We should put the Town Planner on the Voting Board of, a Zoning Board of Appeals, as a voting member. By that logic, that doesn't make sense to me at all. I think we should keep the way things are, the status quo, and keep the HR Director and the Personnel Board separate. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Suckman Buckley.
So if I took out my calculator, I think we'd have a general consensus that the HR Director is a good position. Now, the question is whether they should be a voting member. For me, it's just simply about giving them a seat at the table and a voting position. And to think that somehow this position could fall under some political spell, rather than the appointments of many other positions in town, including the Personnel Board, is, I think, silly on its face. But having said that, I appreciate the different views that members have represented here. I do think they should have an equal block, an equal vote, and not just simply be a liaison or errand person to run errands on salary studies. They should have a vote, and that's been my contention, and I support that, and I'd ask you to support it. Thank you very much.
Any other vote to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Kingke.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, when Mr., one of the previous speakers, who's a member of the Personnel Board, he did, I was at the meeting, I was their liaison for over a year, and I got to tell you, I think I go to a lot of meetings, these folks do a lot of work, and I will never take that away from them. I learned a lot, a lot more than I ever thought I was going to. And when Mr. Abrahamson did bring up the fact of bringing an HR professional in and actually possibly supporting getting rid of the Personnel Board, I actually didn't support that. I appreciated it, but I actually think this is more of the fair hybrid of giving the HR Director a vote so that they're vested in that, and don't think of it as just something they have to do in addition to their, to their work week. I think it's fair. I don't think it's any more or less political than any other appointment to a Board. If we wanted to find, I guess, two or three when it comes up, not as independent folks as there are now, we could do that, technically. It's in our job description. But I think the checks and balances are actually a really good thing in this town, even when we disagree, and sometimes vehemently. But I think there's a built-in check and balance there. So I don't think that having the HR professional as a voting member is going to somehow take the independence away from the other four members who are quite independent, let me tell you, to their credit. So I think it's a fair hybrid. We saw towns that had both, and I don't think there's any reason to get rid of a Personnel Board and put all the power and authority in one single person. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Member from Precinct One.
Amy. Amy Donahue, Precinct One. I guess I'm just a little confused about the function of the Personnel Board, then. I'm not clear why they need a hybrid model where the hired town employee needs to have a vote on it, whereas our school committee, and as one of the previous other speakers said, you know, the town employees who are part of the Finance Department are not on the FinCom, the Town Planner is not on the ZBA, or the, any of those other committees. I'm just curious why the Personnel Board needs a hybrid model where all of our other elected committees don't seem to, in their supervisory and fiduciary roles.
Any other vote to be heard? Mr. Kingke.
No, that was a, that's a great question. I don't think they need a hybrid model. I think it was the fact that that's what we think is the most fair, and, again, keeps these checks and balances in place. But something that Mr. Correa, from the Finance Committee Member Board, mentioned, that struck me early on was, and I, and again, I was a member and sat with them as their liaison for about a year, and again, many, many, many meetings and marathon meetings on Saturdays. It was quite impressive. But they ended up with a consultant that, as, as they put, you know, he was, he was the, he was the low bid, he was the one who they needed to hire, he was very impressive when it came to the presentations and speaking, and then a very short time passed, and we were no longer competitive. And I don't blame the Personnel Board for that. This is things that can happen. So as far as I'm concerned, having an HR professional at the table who can probably challenge and argue and defend Milford to the end during these types of studies that we pay and your Board approves and we pay good money for, I think it, again, it adds an additional strength to the Board. Thank you. I hope that answered your question.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is defeated. Well, it's, all those in favor rise or remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed will rise or remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct One.
Two in favor, twelve opposed.
Precinct One, two in favor, twelve opposed. Precinct Two.
Six in favor, six opposed.
Precinct Two, six in favor, six opposed. Precinct Three.
Four in favor, sixteen opposed.
Precinct Three, four in favor, sixteen opposed. Precinct Four.
Three in favor, seventeen opposed.
Precinct Four, three in favor, seventeen opposed. Precinct Five.
Seven in favor, seventeen opposed.
Precinct Five, seven in favor, seventeen opposed. Precinct Six.
Seven in favor, fourteen opposed.
Precinct Six, seven in favor, fourteen opposed. Precinct Seven.
Six in favor, nine opposed.
Six in favor, nine opposed. Precinct Eight.
Four in favor, thirteen opposed.
Precinct Eight, four in favor, thirteen opposed. At large.
Fifteen in favor, one opposed.
At large, fifteen in favor, one opposed. Fifty-four having voted in the affirmative, one hundred and five in the negative. The motion is defeated. Okay, Article Eighteen.
Suckman Buckley.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to undertake decertification of the property and facilities at One National Street in Milford, which, I'm sorry, which properties and facilities are subject of a tax increment finance agreement between the town and St. Obane Containers, Inc. For reason of the current owner, operators expressed intention to cease all operations and close the business, which was subject of the incentives provided for in said agreement.
Motion made in second of the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to undertake decertification of the property and facilities at One National Street in Milford, which property and facilities are the subject of a tax increment financing agreement between the town and St. Obane Containers, Inc. For reason of the current owner, operators expressed intention to cease all operations and close the business, which was the subject of the incentives provided for in said agreement. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Suckman Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Simply put, St. Obane and the new company that acquired it, Augar Group, have gone out of business, and this would allow the town to again collect taxes on the property. Dissolving this agreement is the only way to do that, and it makes sense to me, and I'd ask your support. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, yes. Mr. Wheelock.
Jamie Wheelock, and I am glad to see this TIF get dead and buried. A good corporate neighbor is more than a local company that we know and like. A good corporate neighbor is one that's willing to pay the full share of their tax bill, just like the rest of us residents, who will, when we're ready to expand our house, know that we will have to pay the full increased amount of our tax bill for the bigger house that we've just worked on. I hope that this Board will work harder to oppose TIFs in the future and recognize that the financial issues that we have before us over and over and over again about fighting for money can be allevied by actually rejecting corporate welfare for people that don't need it. This was a classic example of a company that didn't need a TIF. They weren't going to be able to move their shop. You could pretend that Consigly might move their shop, but again, that begs the question of, what is a good corporate neighbor if they're willing to tell you, if you don't give us what we're asking for, we're leaving. Let's support this article, and let's remember to say no to TIFs. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Carroll.
We have reached a magical hour that we voted on earlier this evening. I realize it's not in place, but I think it at least deserves a consideration. We're not going to finish this evening, and I would move that we suspend the meeting until Wednesday evening at seven o'clock.
A motion to adjourn until Wednesday at seven o'clock. Is there a second? Yep, second. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is defeated. Article Nineteen.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of one hundred thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be added to Fund Number Two-Four-Two-Five, established pursuant to General Law's Chapter Forty, Section Thirteen D, pursuant to vote under Article Twenty-four of the October Twenty-First, Two Thousand and Thirteen Special Town Meeting, said sums to be utilized for future payment of accrued liabilities for compensated absences.
Motion made in second of the town vote to transfer the sum of one hundred thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be added to Fund Number Twenty-Four-Twenty-Five, established pursuant to General Law's Chapter Forty, Section Thirteen D, pursuant to vote under Article Twenty-four of the October Twenty-One, Two Thousand and Thirteen Special Town Meeting, said sum to be utilized for future payment of accrued liabilities for compensated absences. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Suckman, Kingke.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article seeks the sum of a hundred thousand dollars to replenish the fund which is used to make any required payments under union contracts for unused sick leave for our retiring police and firemen. We will have a number of police and fire personnel retiring over the next year, and the town needs to add to this fund in order to meet our obligations to the retiring police and fire. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Twenty. Looks like our former town council, Mr. Moody, a member from Precinct Six.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, Jerry Moody, Precinct Six. Article Twenty. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw relating to solar energy systems as follows, by adding the following to Section Two Point Three Use Regulation Schedule. Under activity or use, RA District not allowed, RB District not allowed, RC District not allowed, RD District not allowed, OR District by special permit from the Planning Board, BP District permitted, CA District not allowed, CB District not allowed, CC District by special permit from the Planning Board, IA District permitted, IB District permitted, IC District permitted.
Motions were made to amend the zoning bylaw, in particular, by adding the following section, Two Point Three, under the Use Regulation Schedule. Does the Planning Board have a report?
Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-A, Section Five, the Milford Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noted public hearing on April Seventeenth, Two Thousand and Eighteen, regarding the subject of Article Twenty, at which time it voted to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article Twenty is an application by Demos and Nicoletta, and I apologize, Per Paris, thank you, to amend the zoning bylaw to allow via Planning Board special permit, solar energy system within the CC Highway Commercial Zoning District. The Planning Board recommends Article Twenty to be adopted as printed in this article. Thank you.
Does any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. It's an amendment to our zoning bylaw, therefore it requires a two-thirds vote. I'll take, since no one's spoken in opposition, I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor of the motion manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article Twenty-One. Attorney Moody.
Jerry Moody, Precinct Six, again. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws relating to over fifty-five residential uses as follows, by adding a new...
Motion to waive the reading of the remainder of the motions of exactly as appears in the warrant, is it?
Exactly.
It is. There are no changes. Any vote to be heard in the motion to dispense with the remaining, a motion, or words under the motion? If not, yes. You want to hear it read all the way?
I'm sorry.
All those in favor of dispensing with the reading of the rest of the motion manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Any vote to be heard? Oh, I'm sorry, report to the Planning Board. I'm sorry.
Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-A, Section Five, the Milford Planning Board conducted a duly posted and noted public hearing on April Seventeenth, Two Thousand and Eighteen, regarding the subject of Article Twenty-One. The public hearing was continued until May One, Two Thousand and Eighteen, at which time the Planning Board voted three in favor, one opposed, to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article Twenty-One is an application by Lobus or Building Corp. to amend the zoning bylaw to allow via Planning Board special permit, limited over fifty-five residential uses within the CA Central Commercial and CB Neighborhood Commercial Zoning Districts. The Planning Board recommends Article Twenty-One be adopted as printed in the warrant. Thank you.
Does any vote to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I move to amend the previous motion in the following way. Under Section Three Point One, Eight Point Six, delete the number One Point Seven Five wherever it appears, and replace it with the number Two Point O. wherever it appears and replace it with the number two point oh, and delete all language beginning with the word except and continuing through the end of the sentence.
An amendment to the motion is proposed as follows. Under section three point eight, I'm sorry, three point one eight point six, delete the number one point seven five wherever it appears and replace it with the number two point zero and delete all language beginning with the word except, beginning with the word except, and continuing through the end of the sentence. All right, so he wants to make a, an amendment under section three point eight, three point one point, three point one eight point six, delete the number one point seven five wherever it appears, and replace it with the number two point zero and delete all language beginning with the word except and continuing through the end of the sentence. Okay? Yes, Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, the way this article is presented, it calls for only needing one point seven five vehicle parking spaces per unit. Reminds me, and I'm sure you people have seen the commercial on TV for the insurance company where the young lady at the end of the commercial says, "So they only want us to drive three quarters of a car?" In any case, I, 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 in principle, I don't have a problem with the article, except that this, my, my motion to amend seeks to change the requirement for one point seven five parking spaces per unit and change that to two, two point zero parking spaces per unit, which is more likely to happen in this day and age. A recent survey of surrounding towns revealed that ninety percent of the surrounding towns require two point two spaces per unit, and many of them additionally require one additional space per unit for visitor parking, which would be a total of three, and I'm only asking for two here, up from one point seven five. It's my understanding that everybody in this town is working to improve the parking situation, the traffic situation, and the congestion. This article seeks to not only not help that, that situation, but exacerbate it with only requiring one point seven five parking spaces per unit. My motion, as I said, seeks to change that to two, two parking spaces per unit, which I believe is, is more realistic. Please support the motion to amend. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard on the amendment to the motion? Yes. Mr. Nell.
As much as I can appreciate what Mike just said, I think historically, as, when we looked at this and when the applicant presented it to us, some of the parking calculations were as low as one point four. I really think geographically it depends on where you are. I think we also need to look at malls throughout the Commonwealth and as well as in this town. It's commonly referred to as shared parking. So obviously, if you're at work, you're not in a parking spot at home, but yet it's still available to perhaps someone in a retail application or a downtown application to utilize the parking. When we look at this proposal, we can't look just across the street. We need to look up the street. And as we look up the street where parking is clearly at a premium, if residential was to be allowed at some of these buildings up the street, you tell me how you're going to get two reserved parking for those and then still have space for retail application. It's virtually impossible. We have to look at the statistics and understand that the majority of people who perhaps would live residentially in downtown, historically would be away during the day so their parking spot or a parking spot would be available. So we have to look at this more as a concept of shared parking, which is what we do now when we start utilizing mixed uses. And whether you like it or not, let's just use the former Bradley's, I forget, Coles, is that what it's called? Yeah, okay. And we look at the different uses that are in there. And the reason why it works is because businesses are open at different times, but people come in for different uses, and that's why there's always a degree of parking available, with the exception, of course, of holidays. I'm sorry, you know, in and around the twenty-fifth, it gets busy at every mall. But again, I think the way this is written, it's functional, it works, and I think it's time that we look at the downtown. And this article finally gives us the ability to change and bring new life to the downtown that is much needed. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard on the amendment to the motion? Yes, the voter from, young lady from precinct six? Five.
Rebecca Mazakely, precinct five. I guess I just have a question. This has already been approved, or that's what we're voting on tonight, and where's the parking going to be? The St. Mary's parking lot? I, I don't know who I'm asking this to, but we don't know how many units yet, or is this, are we voting on tonight to see?
You're voting on a change to the zoning, all right?
So he can, so he can build apartment building.
So it's going to apply to all, all these, you know, all property in this particular zone?
It's very busy. Alls I know is the traffic is crazy as we all know right now, and this is only going to make things a hundred times worse, in my opinion. So I guess my question was, we don't know yet how many units, we're just voting to see about the zoning, correct?
Right. Yes, David?
This is an attempt to improve the process of downtown from the parking perspective. Not too long ago, I was asked to be on the Middle School East Committee, and parking came up, and it was on this building. We spent two years in due diligence on this particular building, which we're trying to, the planning board is actually trying to rezone to one point seven five spaces. Currently, right now, the town of Milford doesn't own the building. There's about six inches of water in the boiler room because the pipes burst. School committee had it one year before we actually finally turned it over. What you see here, you will no, no longer see the gym. If we don't support the reduced aspect of two spaces to one point seven five, you're never going to see a gradual growth of improving and having the Main Street and Milford come back. It's just a fact. This building, a few weeks from now, maybe, could be a twenty-five or a thirty thousand square foot office building, and oh yes, there'll be three parking spaces, but there'll be no housing, there'll be no redevelopment, there'll be no efforts to bring Milford back to when I grew up, when Thanksgiving, that's all we did was walk downtown to see the lights, and the retailers on the first floor flourished. Now, can we fit all this parking downtown? Probably not. We're probably going to have to come back and have the parking reduced even further, specifically for the business owners that are trying to survive with their buildings downtown. Because I'm going to tell you right now, the parking downtown right now is, is really the office, people that have office spaces, or office, or, or the, the churches, or some of the retailers downtown, and during the day, you can't find a parking spot. Specifically, the building that I have, the second floor was filled by the construction company. There were thirty-four people on the second floor. If those were four apartments today, there'd probably be four and a half to five cars in the parking lot. So seeing this, this is the process of how we start to redevelopment, similar like Hudson and Marlborough and Franklin that are being proactive. We're trying to be proactive here. This is just the first step. I think you're going to be very proud to see what happens to that building across the street, providing we can reduce it to one point seven. I think one point seven's more than fair. Other communities in the downtown are shooting around one, 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 two. So saying that, as far as the two oh parking, I urge you to defeat the two oh and continue on with the one seven five. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard? Yes, Mr. Mastriani.
This is just a request for clarification. On, on point, three point eighteen point six, does that apply to all of CA, or is it specifically to the section that's the limited to over fifty-five residential usage?
Any vote that can be heard? Address that? Well, if not, Mr. Visconti.
Just a couple of small flaws in the, two of the previous speaker's logic with respect to parking. With respect to over fifty-five housing, the reality of it is, most of the people who live in over fifty-five housing are over seventy-five and close to eighty and ninety. Those people don't go to work during the day, they park their cars. If there's not two spaces available for them to park their two cars, then they are going to park it in a, in a, in a, in a space, a valuable space that could be used for a shopper to come down and, and shop in, in Milford and, 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 and visit the stores and businesses. They will not have that parking space because it will be taken up by the, one of the over fifty-five cars that, that should be in one of their two spaces, and that's why I present this motion to you. If two spaces cannot be, per unit, cannot be, uh, built in, in a particular project, then the obvious answer is, it's not a viable project, plain and simple. Please, other towns are working to solve their parking and congestion problems. I thought we were too. If we are, please support this motion. If we're not, then do not support this motion. I'd like to solve our parking problem. Nothing has been done, that I know of, to solve our parking congestion problem. This will help if my motion is passed. If my motion is not passed, parking situation, the congestion in these zones and areas will increase tenfold. Please support my motion. Thank you.
Any other vote that can be heard on the amendment to the motion? If not, the question comes upon the amendment to the motion, which is under section three point one eight point six, to delete the number one point seven five wherever it appears and replace it with the number two point zero and delete all the language beginning with the word except and continuing through the end of the sentence. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The amendment is defeated. Does any vote that can be heard on the motion? Are you asking to be recognized, Mr. Antonellis? Mr. Antonellis, Attorney Antonellis is not a resident of the town of Milford, therefore he requires unanimous consent to address the meeting. It's my understanding that he's representing the applicant on this motion. Does any voter object to Mr. Antonellis, Attorney Antonellis, delivering or addressing the meeting? If not, Mr. Antonellis. Five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, to the board of selectmen, to this honorable meeting. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Again, for the record, Joe Antonellis, I'm a lawyer, my office is two eighty-eight Main Street. I am, I am a Milfordian at heart. I was born, brought up here, went to Milford High School. I'm a property owner here, I own my office building. I've had the opportunity to represent Kevin Lobusser of Lobusser Building Corporation in assisting him in the preparation of this article. I don't think that there's anybody that doesn't know that a lot of this article is about the old St. Mary's High School or Middle School East. Again, I go back long enough that it was St. Mary's High School. In the back of the room and in the front, to my left, are renditions of that building, but this article is not just about that building. The question was asked before, this basically affects two zones in Milford, the CA district, which I call the downtown district, and the CB district, which is also called the neighborhood district. Just for points of reference, the CB district begins basically at the intersection of one oh nine and sixteen and comes up right about to the corner of the fire station, and then the CA district goes up all the way through Milford Hospital and includes Main Street up that way where my office is, and some of the smaller offices, buildings in Milford. The primary purpose of this article is to allow for over fifty-five housing, which would be primarily apartment-style housing along Milford's Main Street, and again, the thrust of this is to begin some of the redevelopment of the Milford community to create a walking environment downtown where we have residences downtown, and my client focused on the over fifty-five population because there is not an over fifty-five development in the town of Milford. There are in many of the surrounding towns. His research indicates that over fifty-five is friendly to walking. We felt this was a way to begin the impetus of revitalizing the downtown area, and that is the thrust and theory behind the article that we present to you tonight. If, I can't not say to you, don't look at the posters, because I absolutely think that the restoration of that building at the focal point of Main Street, directly across from the town hall, to re, have that building and to put a statement on the architecture of that building gives you as Milfordians a chance to make a statement that you care about the downtown and are willing to see some changes. Thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation.
Any other vote that can be heard? Yes.
Good evening, I know we're past ten o'clock, so I'll try to be quick. Brian Long, precinct five. I love this building. I love what we would like to see done here. I like the concept of the fifty-five plus for this space, and I love the fact that we're using the old building. It's historical to this town. So I'm very happy that this is going to occur. My concern is that we're basically taking all of Main Street and turning that into fifty-five plus housing, if I understand this correctly. So, number one, do we A, want to do that for essentially the whole length of, of Main Street from one oh nine to the hospital, and two, what happens to the people who already live in those zones? I can imagine there's a, quite a mix of ages that live there that are either property owners or renting, so just curious how that plays out, and it's probably something we should really think about as we go about this. Again, nothing against this development, I think this is fantastic, I just think something has to be thought of in terms of the, the rest of it. I don't know if that's the direction in terms of revitalizing the town and the downtown area that we really want to go in. Thank you for your time.
Any other vote that can be heard? Yes. Speak into the microphone.
Jen Tian, precinct one. A lot of you seem really concerned about the parking situation, and I just want to remind you that in fifty-five plus parking, uh, housing, there are going to be a lot of people who no longer drive, and there are going to be a lot of people who are no longer living with someone else. So the percentage of people who are going to be two-car families is not going to be what you think of if you're imagining your home, if you're thinking of your home and your kids, and your minivan and your other van. You know, it's, it's a different car situation than you might be thinking of, so keep that in mind. There's, I, my ex-husband's had a, a, her, her, his grandfather used to live at, uh, elderly housing, and he used to have these great deals on cars because everyone would move in and would lose their ability to drive, and they'd be like trying to sell this great car for like five hundred bucks that they never drove. It was, but, you know, that ends up, they get to that stage where they're just trying to get rid of the car.
Any other vote that can be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion, since it's amendment to our zoning bylaw, it requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one. Precinct one, sixteen in favor, none opposed. Precinct two.
Nine in favor, one opposed.
Precinct two, nine in favor, one opposed. Precinct three.
Eighteen in favor.
Precinct three, twenty in favor, zero opposed. Precinct four.
Eighteen in favor.
I'm sorry, eighteen in favor.
One opposed.
Precinct five. Precinct 5. Twenty-one in favor and three opposed. Precinct 6. Precinct 6, seventeen in favor, zero opposed. Precinct 7. Precinct 7, seventeen in favor, none opposed. Precinct 8. Precinct 8, twelve in favor, two opposed. At large. At large, sixteen in favor, zero opposed. One forty-six to seven? One hundred forty-six having voted in the affirmative, seven in the negative. The necessary two-thirds has been acquired and the motion is passed. Article 22.
Zachary Taylor, Finance Director, At-Lodge Member. I move that the town vote pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, to transfer the remaining balance of bond proceeds from the issuance authorized by Article 27 of the October 24, 2011 Special Town Meeting for the purpose of renovating, reconstructing, and/or expansion of the Milford Geriatric Authority Facility, which balances currently $365,046.82 to the Woodland School Building Committee account authorized by Article 2 of the February 10, 2014 Special Town Meeting, Fund Number 4081, with the amount authorized to be borrowed for the project to be reduced by the amount transferred and further to allow the Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, to waive the reimbursement of debt service by the Geriatric Authority for an amount equal to the amount transferred.
Motion made in second of the town vote pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, to transfer the remaining balance of bond proceeds from the issuance authorized by Article 27 of the October 24, 2011 Special Town Meeting for the purpose of renovation, reconstruction, and/or expansion of the Milford Geriatric Authority Facility, which balances currently $365,046.82 to the Woodland School Building Committee account authorized by Article 2 of the February 10, 2014 Special Town Meeting Fund, Number 4081, with the amount authorized to be borrowed for the project to be reduced by the amount transferred and further to allow the Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, to waive the reimbursement of debt services by the Geriatric Authority for an amount equal to the amount transferred. Finance Committee?
Favorable.
Favorable. Zach?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, this is a very busy article. And I think I owe a drink to FinCom Chair over here because he did a really good job of explaining it. But I just wanted to recap quickly. There's four major points here. First, we have $365,000 in a capital project fund right now resulting from surplus bond proceeds. As you explained earlier, there's very limited uses you can do under post-bond issuance, one of which isn't applicable here. The second, what we're trying to achieve tonight is to transfer it to a like-kind project. That's where Point 2 comes in. We have the Woodland School project right now at the tail end of completion. And coincidentally, we had approximately $360,000 change order over the past year. So what this basically would do is transfer from one account to the other and avoid the need to borrow further or appropriate from the levy or from free cash. The third part of this article, it's going to rescind the $365,000 from the original $60.9 million authorized. And we will not need to go out and borrow that money. Lastly, the last part of this article approves, authorizes the Treasurer to enter into an agreement with the Board of Selectmen and the Geriatric Authority to get them their money back. And if this gets approved, which I urge you to do so, this is all positive things tonight, then that will happen at a selectman meeting. Thank you.
Any vote to be heard? Mr. Fiscanti?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just one quick question. When the town pays back the Jerry, the three-hundred-odd thousand dollars, will there still be a restriction on what the Geriatric Authority can use that three-hundred-odd grand for? Or can they use it then for anything they want, once it's paid back?
Mr. Taylor?
Thank you. That's a good question. And in actuality, there won't be a transfer of funds to the Geriatric. We're simply going to forgive the amount that they would pay us annually. We pay their debt service. They reimburse us. So it'll give us the authorization to forgive the reimbursement up to said amount. And therefore, they can expend that money on whatever they choose.
Mr. Fiscanti?
I'm sorry. I thought at the beginning of the meeting, when the Finance Committee made their presentation, I distinctly heard them say, and I don't know who it was, that we would then pay back the Geriatric Authority the three-hundred-and-whatever, sixty or sixty-five thousand dollars. So, was that not so? Or is this not so? I'm confused. If somebody can answer that question, why we were told at the beginning of the meeting that we would pay the Geriatric Authority back? And now we're being told, no, we don't pay them back?
Yes, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Fiscanti, if I did say that it was maybe a bad choice of words, when I say pay them back, we do have to give them that money. And we're giving them that money by not having them pay their bill when it comes. Because they owe us money on the loan, because we took the loan out for them. By them not making the loan payment to that in the amount of $365,000, it's just, instead of giving the money to us and then giving back to them, just, they're not going to pay the bill for $365,000. So when I say pay, it's just, we are technically paying them by not making them pay their regular bill up to $365,000. I do apologize.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye? Those opposed, no? Motion is carried unanimously. Article 23. Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $100,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be added to the sums previously appropriated in order to replenish the mitigation plan undertaken pursuant to an agreement with the Public Employee Group pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 32B, Section 21 through Sections 23.
Motion made in second of the town vote to transfer the sum of $100,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be added to sums previously appropriated in order to replenish mitigation plan undertaken pursuant to an agreement with the Public Employee Group pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 32B, Sections 21 through 23. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, this article replenished the health insurance mitigation account that was originally established under Article 12 at the October 22, 2012 Special Town Meeting. As a result of the changes to the employees' health plans under the Municipal Healthcare Reform Act in 2012, the town realized a reduction in the premiums, which savings were to be shared among the town and its employees. The mitigation account for employees was established as a result. This account allows certain users who incur high out-of-pocket claims to be reimbursed for a portion of those claims. As a mitigation account has provided relief to employees since its inception, the selectmen voted to replenish the account to be able to continue with this program. I urge you to support this.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye? Opposed, no? Motion is carried unanimously. Article 24. Mr. Walsh? Motion made in second. We pass over Article 24. Any vote to be heard in the motion to pass over Article 24? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over. All those in favor manifest by saying aye? Opposed, no? Motion to pass over is carried. Article 25. Mr. Kincaid?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire the necessary parcels and/or rights in land for the purpose of obtaining a secure and public right-of-way so to as allow for the construction of signal, intersection, roadway, utility, and sidewalk improvements along Main Street, Route 16, from approximately fifty feet southwest of Water Street to the Milford-Hopedale Town Line, which acquisitions will include permanent parcels and temporary construction easements. And further, that the Board of Selectmen be authorized to acquire said parcels and/or rights in land by any legal means, including the acceptance of gifts, purchase, or by taking by eminent domain in which parcels/easements are currently identified on plans drafted by CHA entitled "The Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Highway Division, Main Street, Route 16, Hopedale and Milford, Worcester County, Right-of-Way Plans."
Motion made in second of the town to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire parcels and/or rights in land for the purposes of allowing the construction of signal intersection at Main Street and Route 16. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to be heard? Selectman Kincaid?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. At the October 24, 2016 Special Town Meeting, the town approved an appropriation of $200,000 to be utilized for potential land and/or easement acquisitions, including damages associated with the Route 16 Main Street rebuilding project. This traffic improvement project begins at the intersection of Main Street and Water Street and continues up to Route 140 and slightly into the town of Hopedale. It is on the TIP target program at $3,149,619 for fiscal year 19 construction. The funding is through the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. This project is the final piece of the Route 16 improvement project. Construction includes reconstruction of the roadway, new curbing and pavement, new sidewalks, upgraded drainage components, as well as major upgrades to the Route 16 and Route 140 intersection adjacent to the Milford Regional Medical Center. There will be a need for acquiring land along the layout to accommodate the roadway improvements. This article seeks to authorize the Selectmen to acquire the necessary parcels and/or rights in land to complete the project. I ask for your support. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion. Since the motion indicates the possibility of eminent domain takings, it requires a two-thirds vote. Since no one spoke in opposition, I'll take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, then the individual precincts will be polled. All those in favor manifest by saying aye? Those opposed, no? Motion is carried unanimously. Article 26. Selectman Walsh?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $50,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be utilized under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen for legal services pending the filling of the vacancies in the Office of Town Council.
Motion made in second of the town vote to transfer the sum of $50,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be utilized under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen for legal services pending the filling of the vacancy in the Office of Town Council. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Selectman Walsh?
Ladies and gentlemen, this article seeks to appropriate the sum of $50,000 for legal services during the transition in the Town Council's office. New Town Council, Charles Barty, began working for the town on May 7, 2018 as longtime Council Jerry Moody has retired. However, the town will continue to needs the services of former Town Council of their existing issues and cases, including three proposed 40B housing projects, which he will work to conclusion. The town also needs to ensure that we will have funds available should we need to hire consultant counsel for any reason. Any funds not used will be returned to the town, to the general fund. We urge your support on this article.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye? Those opposed, no? Motion is carried unanimously. Article 27. Mr. Moore?
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $450,000 from the excess and deficiency account and said sum be utilized to offset the snow and ice deficit in the current fiscal year by transferring $144,000 of said sum to the Highway Department Personal Services Budget, line item 423-5110, and $306,000 of said sum to the Highway Department General Expenses Budget, line item number 423-5300.
Motion made in second of the town vote to transfer the sum of $450,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be utilized to offset the snow and ice deficit in the current fiscal year by transferring $144,000 of said sum to the Highway Department Personal Services Budget, line item number 423-5110, and $306,000 of said sum to the Highway Department General Expenses Budget, line item number 423-5300. Does Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the only budget that we are allowed to overspend. We have overspent this budget by $450,000. And we need to pay these bills for both the plowing salary expenses and for salts and all that type of stuff. So I urge your support.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye? Opposed, no? Motion is carried unanimously. Article 28. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, I move that the town vote to close out certain special article amounts accounts to the general fund of the town to the tune of $166,278.43.
Okay. Does everyone have a copy of the motion with particular line items? Well, I mean, have all the town meeting members been presented with the details of Article 28? Yes? Anybody that hasn't, raise your hand. Okay, you have it? All right. Okay, motion to waive the reading of the individual line items or articles. Any vote to be heard in the motion to dispense with the reading? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye? Opposed, no? Motion is carried. Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, these are amounts left over from previous articles that have been closed. So there's remaining balances left over. And through your approval, the finance group will be able to transfer these amounts back into the general fund. The total amount is $166,278.43. I urge you to vote for approval to do this.
Any vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye? Those opposed, no? Motion is carried unanimously. Article 29. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I move that the town vote to transfer funds between line items voted under Article 4 of the May 22, 2017 Annual Town Meeting for the purpose of making funds available in line item accounts not sufficiently funded for the fiscal year.
Motion to waive the reading if it's exactly as appears in the handout the town meeting members have. Is it, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any vote to be heard in the motion to dispense? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye? Those opposed, no? Motion is carried. Mr. Brown?
Ladies and gentlemen, these actions will have no net effect on any spending. They're just administrative transfers. Basically, within budgets and line items, we need to just transfer funds to balance out the accounts. There's no additional expense to the town. And I ask for your approval and your support.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye? Those opposed, no? Motion is carried unanimously. Yes? Mr. Nero? Yes, Mr. Nero.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we were led to believe that this body would debate Article 13, the expenditure to $700,000.
You're out of order, Mr. Nero. There's no motion pending before the board. You do not have the opportunity to speak on something that wasn't considered. What am I, I would entertain a motion to...
And the deceptive way this was buried in the public safety.
Please be seated, please be seated, Mr. Nero.
It puts the risk of our children...
Mr. Nero, if you don't sit down, I'll ask the police department to come and remove you from the hall. Motion to dissolve is in order. Okay, all those in favor of dissolving the warrant manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried.